Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Tonight's meeting has been advertised as a New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Geely.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Here.
Mr. Langtry. Mr. Nafali. Mr. Riviat.
Yes.
Mr. Inberg.
Here.
Mr. Wells.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Habbish.
Here. I see we're missing Mr. Langtry and Mr. Nafali, so I'll be sitting with Inberg and Mr. Gross in lieu of their presence. Can I ask you one, please rise to the flag.
(inaudible) to the flag. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a approval of minutes for the June 12 meeting? Can I motion for approval of minutes?
American motion.
Motion from Mr. Halverson. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Inberg. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Geely.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Inberg. Mr. Wells.
Here.
Mr. Habbish.
Yes, okay. Madam Secretary, I see we have two correspondence on the letter of tonight's agenda.
Yes, we have a request from appeal number 3940, Joseph Weiss, 536, lot 81, 236, Clover Street, for a one-year extension to file an amendment. This is up to you, Jan.
Okay.
This was approved in November of '16. It's a rather ordinary request, since there's no zoning changes, to extend it for one year.
Okay, so it's for one year?
Yes.
Okay, that is on Clover Street. That, I believe, that was a, that was for townhouses, is that correct?
I'll tell you the second here. It was for construction of a triplex.
Triplex, right. Okay, that's the case, that's a whole, very dense area, so I don't even have an issue with that. If anyone has any issues with giving him an extension for another year, can you speak up? If not, does he have a motion?
I have.
Good evening.
Can I speak or this is not open to the public?
This is first time, sound of the public.
So, I can't speak.
Thank you.
Masking, so yes or no question?
No, sure, go right ahead.
I have nothing to say, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve or deny?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion for Mr. Geely to approve.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Gonzalez. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Geely.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Riviat.
Yes.
Mr. Inberg.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Habbish.
Yes. We have another correspondence?
Yes, appeal number 3563, Aaron Ginsburg, lot 771, 04, lot 13, 307 Pine Street. They're asking for two one-year extensions.
The statute only allows them to get one, one-year extensions, back another year from now, so they can't get two one-year extensions now. They're only getting one now and one a year from now.
Okay. I wasn't going to give them two-year, two-one-year extensions either because I don't know what's going on over there and I don't know if it's going to happen next year, that's hilarious. So, what do they, what, they work with their single-family dwelling units, right?
Yes, it's also subdivision.
It's also sub, I know. And that's on Liberty, that's right, Sunset, right?
No, 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 Pine Street, the other side.
Oh, 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 that was that one.
Thank you.
Is that, or just Liberty Drive, right, 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 right?
It was from Forest Park.
Yes.
I have a leg with him, you can see it.
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Got it.
So, I'm understanding your request is that pretty much a person just can't get his documents in order, and they're requesting an extension, so that they have a little additional time to do this, being that the original expired a year. I'm just curious, somebody's coming up front and asking for a two-year extension, that kind of indicating that he's just really just pushing it off and saying, "Is it?"
I really don't know what, how, where, when. Oh, that's that one, well, he, my, correct, okay, I know that. I really can't speak to that one. This is done in, 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 for. Did we ever have any, any other extensions filled out, provided for that?
We know the Extension Act expires June 30th, this year, 2022.
Uh-huh, that's what you want to do, otherwise you could have had it. So, did anyone here from the client that we can discuss it with him and see why?
That, that...
Could that be you?
That would be me.
Okay. Can you tell us a little about why he wants the extension?
Well, he...
And can you help out, Mr. Riviat over here? Can you add why we have to get it through him, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. You swear or affirm to fill the whole street's sound?
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. This applicant got a subdivision approval there. The area, that Pine Street area is very heavy in traffic, so it hasn't, marketing has been difficult. He doesn't know if there's potentially another use, and the two years was given the time to see if there's a better use for the property. My, my interpretation of the municipal land use law was that you were allowed to get two one-year extensions. One-year extension is certainly fine, it's not that he would just want to forget about the project, he was seeing if there was a better use for the property, so the, a one-year extension would be sufficient.
Better use, maybe a different use?
Well...
You say better use, maybe, if it comes to anything else that we gave him, he has to come back and run the board with a new application.
That's, that's correct, he would have to come back with a new application.
So, it's just a matter of, does he want to put the use that we gave him here, one, two, three, four, five, six lots?
Well, he had, yes, he had somebody telling him that it would be a good spot for commercial, he wanted to see how the master plan went, to see if they were going to suggest neighborhood commercial there, because then, everybody knows what the traffic is like at that point, it's horrendous. It's one of the worst spots in town. So, it, it doesn't look like, the way the master plan process is going, that they are going to entertain changing it in that fashion, so he's probably going to build the houses that were approved back in 2004, and he's going to have to find six families that enjoy seeing stopped cars and...
So, I have a similar question to that. Why don't we just file the map as it, and then he can do, or later whatever he wants? It's always great to file the map.
Well, filing the map is more than just filing, you post bonds, you've got to go to the county, get county approvals, it, he has to expend additional funds in order to do that, and he was respectfully requesting that the board give him, he was asking for two, he'd be happy with one.
So, basically, he wants to see if it's ready to write, or might change?
Right, well, if the master plan had been done a year ago, he probably would have at that point, but he's been waiting for the master plan and the smart growth plan and the plan endorsement, which, as we all know, has been an ongoing process for many years.
So, he basically wants to see how the new master plan is going to play itself out, and he doesn't want to lose what he has till now?
That's correct.
Okay, I have no issue with that.
Mr. Flannery, has the zoning changed for this property?
No, it has not.
I'd like to have an interest, please speak up, Mr. Flannery, or can I have a vote?
Yes.
I do a question. Isn't, this lot is the corner of the market, you can get, like...
That is correct.
Some of the houses of that subdivision have already been built.
No, they haven't.
Nothing has been built?
No.
Well, so, if there's some, there's some lane in the middle which is wetland, is that correct?
No.
That's not wetland?
No, there's no wetlands on this particular property.
That might mean the other side.
Yeah, the...
No, the other side, the more than that trailer is what...
Yeah, but to the, to the east of this property, further east on Pine Street, a couple houses were built, and then there is, and then there is wetlands when you get in that area, but there's, there's no wetlands on this property.
Okay, Franny, can you pass me back that check to, what's it called? If you look at the, at the real map, that's the real map, we took that to five, because that's a force, or whatever. Take a look, if you look at the map, Marty, you'll see exactly what's going on.
It's, it's shaped, you're, you're all right with the form.
Yeah, yeah, it's all drawn up, that's the approval, but it didn't file the map at the council level, so therefore it's going to expire, and he wants to have another year to the side, or to the fore. If he's ready? Are you okay?
Yes.
Any further questions? Okay, any, no further questions? Panel for the questions, and I'd like to have a motion either for approval or denial.
I'll move to approve of one-year extension.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Gross for one-year extension. Can I have a second? Who's second that? Mr. Geely's second that, Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Geely.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Riviat.
Yes.
Mr. Inberg.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Habbish.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good night and good luck. Moving into old business, so before we move to old business, I think you, Mr. Strong...
Gertner, thanks. I've been here...
Thirty years and I can't remember any.
That's okay.
Or it actually is still a matter of time.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. I represent the applicant, I believe it's number seven on your agenda, for the Sebag application, we're asking that that matter be carried to the July 24th, 2017 meeting.
Which one? The last one.
Last one, the Lakewood Court Yore.
3743A, David Sebag.
July, two weeks, the July 24th meeting, looking at your agenda, coupled with, we had a notice issue, we had to re-notify the neighbors, so we'd like to have the matter carried to July 24th without further notice required.
Okay, that's because you didn't notice properly.
Correct, but we've corrected that.
Okay, that's fine, so you didn't notice properly, then it can be heard anyway.
Right.
So, therefore I will grant you the paper link to the July 24th meeting.
I'll need a vote, Chairman.
Yeah. So, can I have a motion to approve the extension of this...
I'll make a motion.
Motion for Mr. Geely, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Halverson, Madam Secretary, roll call please. No further questions, we have a fight.
He's indicated he has now sent out the correct notice for the 24th.
Yes. And the secretary has the copies.
Mr. Geely.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Riviat.
Yes.
Mr. Inberg.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Habbish.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and we waive any time requirements as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone that's here for appeal number 3743A, David Sebag, can be heard at our next board meeting, which is set July 24th here in this room. Okay?
Chairman, I understand, or anyone in the audience, number 4028, Bernard Gorman, is also off, any reason?
It's scheduled for September 11th, that's when we carried last month to September 11th.
Then September 11th, that was on the agenda, may I have a... So, there's nothing, we don't have to do any motion or anything for that. Excellent. Okay? Fine, so we're going to go into old business, 4024 Zalmaris.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant for that one is not here yet, he'd like to be carried till later in the meeting when he can be here.
No problem, no problem, let him wait. So, we're going to go for new business, 4027, Drake, Drake Developments.
Drake, was big, lot 251, up to the last 98, up to the zone, new families, single-family homes, but undersized lots, and telephones in your plan, the third, 2017. The applicant requests, why the change, reduce density, variance, release, construct up to 29 families, single-family homes, and, 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 previous application of the 2003 was made for 30 single-family residential homes presented at the 10/36, 2017, some court meeting, that was it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah?
I have their due.
Okay, so you're going to approve some of this application? That's a break down for the record. Mr. Gross has to approve himself on it, but we have six members moving forward.
Flannery, am I right, answer? You swear or affirm to fill the whole streets, I hope you got it.
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. I'm sure the attorney is going to say with only six members here, he's entitled to have seven members. I, I know the board's policy is that we hear the application and don't vote. If...
We hear the application, and we're going to look for the vote for the seventh member. At that point, at that time, the seventh member could read or listen to the transcript, assign information that he did so, and then we can go for a vote.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Flannery, after the applicant, I did speak with, I did speak with my client, and again, we would like to have seven members, I understand that we only have six tonight, so we will go forward with the application this evening, put our proofs on, but that there will not be a vote, we're asking the table to vote, so we can go ahead and have the full seven members present.
That's fine, but let me also tell you, since this has been my deal of quite a lengthy application, like we did last time with one of your clients, with 45 minutes, an hour, if we're not finished yet, I will have to stop you. I'm coming for a vote next month anyway.
I understand.
Okay?
Does anyone have another choice?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, Mrs. Chairman, so just as, as the board is, I'm sure recalls, this application was not long ago before the board, with a basically very similar application, as Fran indicated, it was for originally not to exceed 30 single-family homes. At the time, after we went through the whole night of the, of the hearing and the public comments, we came to a vote, we got down to the point where we were about to vote, and there was a question raised, because again, we're only, we're asking for a bifurcated application here, we're looking for the use, there were, an issue was raised with regard to the notice, that the notice said that we were asking for 30, we're asking for 30 single-family lots. Your question, I believe, was, was to the attorney, to Mr. Dasty, indicating, can you say yes, that we're going to make a motion to approve the use, but not set the actual amount of units? The issue came about that, based upon the way the notice was written, that we were unable to do so. So, what we've done now, we've come back, and we've taken some of the comments from the board at that meeting, we have reduced the overall application, the, the more important issue here is that we revised the actual notice, so that the lots, the way, the way that the notice is written, no lot will be less than a 12,000 square foot lot. There are going to be lots that are larger, it's going to be some of 15,000, some of 14,000, but that planning will get done at a later time, when we come back for our site plan, our site plan approval, should the board see, deem fit to approve the use, the use request. So, like I said, indicated, so we are going to go forward here, all our notices are not less than, with that language, so the board is not locked in, and you can come back and say, you know what, we'll come back, if we like the use, come back with a plan that we're going to like, and these are at least some of the parameters that we have to come back to the board with.
So, before you continue into the, dive into the application now, I will turn to my attorney, I'm an engineer, I guess, can agree with what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because I don't want to go through the whole night, you know, like last time, and then find out that we can't even vote on it.
Now, Chairman, I've reviewed the, I've reviewed the notice, the notice is fine for the use variance application.
The way he wants to present it?
Yes.
That we're not going to give him a number of units at the end of it?
That's the way we normally do uses, that's correct.
That's correct, so we're going to move forward with the notion that...
He wants...
He has to have 30 lots, or whatever he has.
Twenty-nine.
And I'm not even going to look at that?
Correct, the only thing you're locking yourself into, and during confirm, is, are the, basically the R12 standards, that it can't be less than. I'm going to have some lots that'll be 13, 14...
But I'd like to tell you to have all of it to 15,000 square feet at that point.
Correct, but at this point...
All of it, 18,000, all of it at, at 10, all of it at 12.5, or whatever I want.
Correct, but we're just on the board now, it's not going to be, anything you see later on will be not less than.
Got it, I don't want to go through the whole night, because I'm quite not...
Yes, I agree, I appreciate that.
I get a clarification, yes, did you just say that the, the application, this lot says it's a minimum of 12,000, but that when they come for site, you can insist on 15,000 or 18,000 square foot lots?
Correct.
Even though they're getting approved at R12 standards?
We're not giving them a...
It's not less than.
It's not less than. Okay, so then, just to be clear, what we're listening to is just a general overview of whatever the standards are going to be, you know, I mean, are we voting on R12 standards, but we can have larger lots, or we're just accepting an application for variance to have something other than R4? We're, we definitely just said, we, we're accepting an application for use variance other than an R40, but not smaller than R12, anywhere in between. Okay, so then if, if at the end of the night, we decide that, that the vote is, let's say, call it an R15?
No, we're not saying that.
Okay?
We're saying not smaller than 12,000.
So, then the standards are always, if that's the case, if we're not saying R15, then the standards will always be what the minimum is, therefore setbacks and everything will be based at R12.
Yes, but, but, here's the big difference, now, when they come in for the site plan, right, and we find that R12 is too dense for this lot, for this lot, and we more than all the 15,000 square feet, we are, we're going to have the right to do so.
So, we will have the right to, to make it into R15 standards?
Yes. Okay, so now, so what, so we're voting on just changing... Changing to, to something later on... From 12 to something else, correct.
And the, and the max, based upon all that, the max you would ever see would be 29, which we know, the chairman's indicated, you know, that, that's the, well, our best case, but the worst case in terms of, of the amount of units. Nothing will be less than the R12. And that's what we got...
So, the 12, so basically 12,000 square foot lot is just a number that we're picking at, a starting point?
A starting point.
As if the negotiations started from 12 to 40, somewhere in between.
Right, and, and the reason for, and again, just, just, I know the board always is, you know, they're not, you guys aren't big fans of bifurcated applications, but there's a lot that goes into, into these plans and these applications. So, to go ahead and to design the whole project, to come back in here with R12 standards, and then you come back and say, this isn't it, go back, well, we're here to say, let's get it a starting point, now we know what the board wants to see, we hear the comments, we know what we can design, and we know, we come in with the whole application of just R12s, I know that that site plan hearing is going to go. So, but we need to start off somewhere, and we were here last time, the board said, come back with something different, so that's what we're here for.
Okay.
I think I swore you went, yes.
Yeah, so let's move forward.
So, this kind of allows Brian Flannery to address Terry's May 3 review letter. I have three exhibits marked this evening. A1 is the plan that was submitted, that shows the lots ranging from 12,000 to 15,000 square feet, and, and what it shows that's important is a connector between Drake Road and Cross Street, and later on in the testimony, I'll hit on that, that this property is particularly suited for something different, because by providing that connector, we provide additional avenues for traffic, and even Mr. Klein, all the time, says there should be more roads, so I, I think he's going to be happy with this one. And in addition to that, as Adam had indicated, in order to make this work, we're proposing to bring sewer into the area. And bringing sewer into an area is a benefit, as described in the master plan, but in this particular area, it's a bigger benefit than that, because we have several schools built in this area on septic systems, and, and those are just ticking time bombs. Schools of that size should be on public sewer and public water, this applicant will extend the facilities in there, so he'll provide a benefit to those schools as well. So, A1 is the map that's submitted, A2 is a map of the area with, with a lot of nice colors on it. The greenish area is the Crystal Lake Preserve, and, and what I'm indicating there is, we're between Jackson Township and the Crystal Lake Preserve, and we're in this area that was studied in the 2014 Master Plan Amendment. And the reason the 2014 Master Plan Amendment looked at this area is because it's a unique section of Lakewood, which is underneath Westgate, kind of separated from a lot of the, the remainder of the single-family lots by the Crystal Lake Preserve, which, which is a, a natural barrier, which provides open space and passive recreational opportunities, and also dilutes any of the density in this area. And then we have Jackson Township, which has the industrial uses to the west. On the map, the colors, the pink colors are applications which have been approved by the zoning board, there were 15,000 square foot lots approved on New Fourth, there were duplexes approved off of Jane Street, there were 15,000 square foot lots approved at the corner of Cross and White, there were 12,000 square foot lots approved on the opposite side of Cross Street, right across from us, and then we have Serenity Estates, which the planning board approved on 15, roughly 15,000 square foot lots. So, it's an area, and I know the area very well, and I, I know it's a busy agenda, so I'll try to be quick, but I know that area very well, because I, I lived in that area, I moved into there in 1987. When I moved in in 1987, I thought, it was an A1 zone at the time, I thought this is going to be an estate area, I'm going to live in Lakewood forever, and I did not realize that A1 and R40 property, with the tremendous demand for schools that Lakewood has, that it was not staying forever. So, in, in the late 90s, I talked to some of my neighbors, and I said, hey, we, we should get this changed to R12, so that we don't get overrun by schools, and take our neighborhood from one of the nicest neighborhoods in Lakewood to an area that's overrun by schools with the school buses and the school traffic. And I love schools, and you need schools in Lakewood, but when you get, and all those asterisks, and, and I've called out, there's nine, there's probably 11 by now, because it, it seems like every day, another school pops up and a house. The houses that have sold have sold to schools, some of the schools build brand-new two- and three-story, the school buildings, some of them start up as startups. But as far as traffic in the area, having that many schools with the buses and the parents and, and all the traffic, it ruined that area, I no longer live there. I, I had the availability to move to Jackson, where there isn't the demand for schools, and I'm in a residential area. The chairman made a comment that, that it really isn't relevant to the application. So, that, that's the situation that it is now, and that's in 2014, my neighbors that in the 90s said, no, we like it the way it is, let's try to keep it the way it is, they came back in 2014, and they said, Brian was right, and sometimes it takes people 10 or 15 years to realize that I'm right when they think I'm wrong at the outset, and they said, we should ask for different zoning. They went to the township committee, the township committee directed the planning board to do a master plan, and they did the master plan, adopted April 8, 2014, and part of the reason when we're asking for use variance with the board is to look at, is why would you approve a use that's different than the zoning ordinance and different than the master plan? So, there's the two-pronged question that we have to overcome, along with a few other things. In this case, this is consistent with the master plan, and the master plan actually recommended duplexes for this property on 12,000 square foot lots. On page four of that report, it says, "By rezoning the study area to accommodate more housing units and a larger population, the township would be making a proactive effort to accommodate its growing population, consistent with overall objectives of the smart growth plan." On page six, it, it says to zone this area to the R12B, and it gives some conditions for what you would need in order to have duplexes, and, and one is, is public sewer, which this applicant has indicated that he would bring in. And then it gives the, the permitted density that they're recommending for this area, which they recommended in R12B, and the permitted density that they recommended with 7.2 units per acre. So the applicant could come in with a plan for 7.2 units per acre, and I could tell you it's consistent with the master plan. He's not here asking for duplexes or 7.2 units per acre. On page nine of that report, it indicates, "Though a portion of the population increase will be accommodated in centers, cores, and nodes that are described in the smart growth plan, these areas are unable to accommodate all the population increase, thus it's necessary to evaluate other areas of the township for their suitability to accommodate the township's growing population. This master plan amendment is the result of the township's comprehensive evaluation of the suitability of the above-described area to accommodate the portion of the township's population growth." As I've told the board before, this was actually, the master plan was adopted, and it's the current master plan with recommendations for that area. The township committee actually adopted the ordinances to implement this, and one of the neighbors filed an appeal. A judge determined that they should have noticed everybody that owned property in the area, and everybody within 200 feet. So those ordinances are overturned, but the master plan is not overturned. The master plan stands as this. The governing body, as we know, was dealing with plan endorsement, and they've been dealing for almost two years now with a master plan update, which, if that had gone quicker, the applicant may not need to be here because it may have been zoned accordingly. But it's unfair to make an applicant wait around while forces beyond his control dictate other courses of action. So looking again at justification, the master plan of 2007 under housing indicated that there's been a tremendous demand for residential growth in Lakewood. On page 35, this is under the housing section, and the conclusion is, for all this growth, however, not all of Lakewood's housing needs are met. And that gets repeated in the smart growth plan, it gets repeated in the 2014 plan. The 2007 master plan also said, "To encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles," and it's my testimony that this would be smart growth planning principles. It's creating a linked road, it's extending necessary utilities. The municipal land use law, NJAC 40 and 55D2, says, "To encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands and estate in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare," and it's my testimony that this does this. And it says, "To promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions, and preservation of the environment." And it's my testimony that this does this. And what I read to you from the 2014 master plan says that, on top of it just being my opinion, it was the opinion of the planning board who adopted that plan. Now, we're here for a bifurcated application, and as Adam indicated, we know the township would rather see the plan. This applicant has to do a lot of money on designing the sanitary sewer to come there, which he wouldn't do if the board and the township say they should stay R40. He wouldn't do that, he would look for a school to buy the property and have a nice day. He has to deal with the county. At one of the prior meetings, I indicated that I had a conversation with the county engineer, and improving Cross Street was high on their priority list, and they were actually having consultants develop plans and looking for right-of-way. When some of the public members got up, they disputed my testimony, which, it doesn't hurt my feelings, but I've been testifying before this board for 30 years, and I think the board understands my professional qualifications. I saw in the scoop recently that Mayor Coles indicated that he was talking with the county as well, and that the county assured him. So unless either Mayor Coles or the scoop is wrong also, then the objectors who got up, I think are on the wrong side of that testimony. When we came back, we would have details from the county on the Cross Street widening. We would have a traffic report to show how many units can be in here without disrupting it. The traffic report would show how this connector road actually improves traffic at the intersection. We would do a lot of work to prove to the board that what we're presenting makes sense. In order to have the motivation to do that, we're here saying, we would do at a minimum R12, which is greater than what the master plan said. We would have a mix of 12,000 to 15,000 square foot lots. And all we're asking for is the use variance to allow us to do that. The use variance relates to the density. The R40 zone allows a density of 1.1 dwelling units per acre, which would mean 12, and it sounds great, we put 12 houses there, everybody's happier, there won't be 12 houses there, there'll be more of these asterisks for the schools. As I indicated before, the master plan recommended a density of 7.2 dwelling units per acre. We're asking for, with 29 units, which would be the most, so therefore the most would be 2.7 for dwelling units per acre, which is roughly three times less than what the master plan recommended, and a little bit more than double what R40 is. But if people think the R40, oh, it would be great to have R40, it's a dream. I lived there since 1987. I think there was one guy who built a house there on a 40,000 square foot lot after I moved in. Everybody else that built there was building schools. And I think if I had convinced my neighbors back in the 90s, it would be a beautiful R12 neighborhood now, and I would still be living there. We're now at 2017. I hope my testimony wasn't that shocking.
Just wondering, can you identify A3 for us?
A3 is a copy of the tax map, and it shows in orange the subject property, kind of to do in a larger scale what we have on A2 above. A2 above shows how it fits in all the various moving pieces. The blue lines are the county roads, we're right on a county road. We connect between a county road and Drake Road, and anybody who's familiar with that area knows that the traffic on Drake Road is horrendous. My wife and I used to run every morning, and 30 years ago when I ran, it was, once a year, somebody would almost hit me before we moved out. It was every day that I almost got run over. People just getting to school, they come around to bend in that road, and that's where the location of this property sits well, and that we can make that bend a much better situation if it's developed residentially instead of for schools. And that's basically what we're asking for tonight. Looking through the other comments in Terry's report, we're here for use only. He asks about the number of bedrooms and the road design, and we would provide all those details if the board acts favorably on the use variance approval. For a use variance, according to the municipal land use law, we have to show that in particular cases and for special reasons. And I think when you look at A2, you can see, this is a unique situation. It's a property that was studied by the master plan, it's a property that has a critical link between Drake Road and Cross Street, and I think the special reasons outlined in my prior testimony from the master plan and the municipal land use law certainly indicate that this is the enhancement to the public good. When we look at the positive and negative criteria, we're gonna be putting more houses than are permitted there in the R40, but we're putting less traffic and less impact than if it's developed by schools, which is permitted by organizations. And that is my testimony.
I just have one or two small questions. You mentioned, well, Cross Street being widened, I know there's been a lot of discussion about Cross Street being widened by the county and township and so on and so forth. The township feels very strongly that it is happening, and it's just in the planning states right now, it can't be, that's the information I perceive as well, from the township. Do you take into account widening Cross Street and how it will affect your proposed property lines?
Well, as we indicated, the sketch that was done is just that a sketch. If the county asks for 40 feet widening, then we lose a few lots to accommodate that. Whatever the, excuse me?
How wide is it going now?
The current right-of-way, I believe, is 66 feet.
And they're talking about putting in two lanes?
Yes.
So that's a total of another 40 feet?
No, no. The next bump up in the right-of-way width that they would have would be 80. 80, so that's 40 from each side instead of 33 from each side, so it would be an additional seven feet.
But in any matter, we were complying, we were, we're with the county.
Should this application be approved, take that into consideration?
Oh, we would not come back till we had something definitive from the county on what the widening of Cross Street would be. Even the 2014 master plan says that. So, you know, I want to come back and say we're consistent with the 2014 master plan. In order to do that, we have to know what widening is being done on Cross Street and show that we're accommodating it on our plan.
From what I understand, the county and the state is a lot further into widening Cross Street than they were in 2014.
Yes, and they absolutely should be. It's a disgrace that we have a road, we have a town with 100,000 people, and we have a road that carries that kind of traffic. I drive through all the other towns, Tom's River, Jackson, when they have that kind of traffic, they have widened roadways, and it's a disgrace that we haven't gotten yet. I know that the township committee was focused on this plan endorsement, that they're now focused on improving the roads, and I have confidence in them that they will get the roads done. The county extracts an impact fee from the developer based on the number of lots to help them build their road, which this developer, if it's, if the board acts favorably, will have to pay. And the township also passed an impact fee, so they will take money because it takes money to improve the roads. If we do nothing, the traffic's only gonna get worse. If we improve the roads, somebody has to pay for it, and it's either the taxpayer or the developers. So everybody thinks developers are bad people, and I don't know why, they're all living in a house built by a developer. And by proxy, I'm a bad person because I work for the developers. I think they're good people because they provide the money and they provide the housing opportunities.
Okay, so you, and also remember, the county is gonna put us down sidewalks on...
Absolutely.
You think that over consideration?
I have not presented an application to the board in many years, this board or the planning board, without sidewalks because Lakewood has evolved into a city, and you need sidewalks.
Okay, next question. You have them over here, they're not gonna be smaller than 12,000 square foot lots, and you have over here the 12,000 criteria. Aggregates side yard, 25 feet side yard, backyard, 20 feet, 30 feet front yard, so on and so forth. I look at your plan over here, I don't see any lots over here that are 50 feet wide or having backyard of 20 feet or so on and so forth. So are you looking to be more close with what you presented here on the sketch, or are you looking to do something based on your R12? Or is it, or are there one or two pieces there that is within 12 or 20?
We've shown boxes on the plan, and the boxes fit well within the setback lines because in R12, R12 lot, and the many of them that are bigger than that, they fit well within those lines. The reason for asking for the R12 setback bulk criteria, which by the way is the same as the R15, the 10 and 15, the 30 and the 20, it's the same as the R15, is so that when people come in for their custom houses, if somebody wants it a little deeper and somebody else wants it a little wider, it gives them that flexibility. If they want to put there an office type room or a playroom off the back, the whole, you know, it certainly wouldn't be, we would envision the whole back of the house being at the 20-foot setback line because there's no reason to do that on an R12 lot.
Correct. I was only saying, the reason why I'm asking is, I have, which I'm going to, is 12,000, 15,000, 18,000, I have a problem with that. At this point, you know, it's user aids, if you remember, I had a problem the last time, we just had a gathering vote. But looking at it more closely now, we can try to stick to bigger backyards in a, in this neighborhood of 12,000 square foot houses, put down a 30-foot backyard or a bigger side yard, it'll enhance the way the neighborhood will look. It won't just look like you're squeezing in a square peg in a round.
Well, if the board acts favorably, we would certainly look at each of the lots, and we'd look at appropriate type of units for those lots, and we could look at enhancing the, all of the setbacks, the sides and the rears.
And we're happy to hear the board's comments and feedback, and what they would like to see. Obviously, we have to come back before the board for the final vote of the development, so we're happy to listen to it and then come back with a nice plan that everyone's happy with.
Yeah, you know, coming back here, look, this lot over here is 143 by 105. This lot over here is 90 by 140, 109 by 118. I don't see any of those 50 feet frontage. I don't see any of them that has a 20-foot backyard. I see over here 30-foot backyard, 28-foot backyard. I don't see any of them that has a very side yard, maybe just by the points where if it's a pizza place, lunch place, odd shaped lot, where it comes up to a point where you might, the corner of the house might be at that 12 and 1/2 feet or whatever, but the majority of the lots are very nice, 44 feet, 47 feet, to 20.11, 38 feet, you know what I'm saying? 37, 33.
Yes, and if the board were to act favorably, we would, when we came back, show setbacks that would exceed the R12 requirement. The R12 requirements are the minimum, and certain lots, depending on what house would fit on them, you know, we'd be looking at them as a minimum, but we would certainly look to it to come back with a plan that the board's gonna say, you're giving us something extra, and that's why we should approve these lots, along with the details on the sewer and water that we're extending, the details on the traffic improvements that we're making in the traffic report, how it impacts the surrounding area.
Is that outside?
Yes.
All that, all that we discussed, the site plan?
Yes.
Very important, you're gonna have to do your homework on Cross Street widening, that'll make a big difference.
Yes, well, we will meet with the county engineer, we will find out what their plans are, and we will have specific details and documentation so that people from the public who think I'm a bad guy because I work for builders have something concrete that they can see. They don't think that for any reason other than they're scared of the direction Lakewood's going, and their solution is to stop. That's really not a solution. The traffic will continue to get worse. The solution is smart growth. That's what the township is looking at now with the master plan update, and I'm optimistic based on the activity that I've seen with the township and the county, that it's heading in the right direction and things are gonna get better.
Any fellow board member gonna say anything?
Just looking at the layout that we have here, are some of these lots, frontages on these lots smaller than 90?
No.
None of them?
Now, the frontage gets measured at the front setback line, and if the sketch missed on a few of them, when we come back to the board, none of them will have frontages less than 90 feet.
And also you've mentioned that the water and sewer, is this in the moratorium area, this particular?
Well, I'm glad you mentioned the moratorium area because that came out, and everybody thinks, oh, sewer's stopping. Well, sewer's stopping until somebody writes a check to fix the pipes that need to be fixed. Approving this application gets you one more guy who can write the check to fix the problem. And if nobody writes a check, well, then it's gonna stay the way it is now, but with property values and development pressures the way they are in Lakewood, if this project gets approved, the applicant will work with other builders, and it's not a lot of money. It's a small amount of money to fix problems. New Jersey American Water released that to get everybody's attention, and they did, and the builders will work and fix the pipes. It's not they don't have capacity, it's not that everything has to get torn up. Right now, there's a pipe in Sunset Avenue that needs to get rebuilt, and, you know, if nobody else does it, this applicant could do it by himself, and it would still be worth it to develop the property and bring the sewer to the schools that are in this area.
Is that what he's actually offering? Because that's how I understood the application.
He's offering that he's gonna bring public sewer to the project.
Where is that?
Drake Road. It currently ends at Serenity Estates.
The whole JCH was torn up about two years ago when they put a brand new sewer in.
Yes, yes.
Route 9 all the way to Drake, to Serenity Estates.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, not from Route 9. It went from the, it went from the existing manhole that was probably a quarter mile west of Sunset, in front of Rabbi Katz's school. Rabbi Katz had brought the sewer up to his school, and then, and then they extended it further down.
I remember that was going on in that street.
Yes. But, yes, this application, we're expecting would be conditioned upon bringing public sewer. That's the benefit that's been offered as one of the benefits.
A little over to the public, anyone who would want to be here, please step up. Remember, we have a full minute here for the public to speak.
If corruption would have had a smell, I wouldn't be able to stand over here. This application is a typical example how corruption works on Lakewood. And I'll explain. The same attorney that gets paid to apply for the zoning board for this application is the same guy that sits on the master plan density subcommittee, and an application came in the way it came in over here to change the zone to R12, to the master plan. And this attorney was sitting there and actually promoting and voting that they should increase the density, the same thing that he's asking to do over here. The fact that we have an attorney that gets paid by the applicant to come to the zoning board, and he does the same thing by the advisory committee, and everybody is assuming that he works for the public, and he does for the public... he works for the public, and he does for the public good, even though he doesn't live in Lakewood. The fact that he's getting paid, but in the same time, January 23rd that application, June 23rd that application went into the master plan, and he comes over here with the same thing to ask for this board, I don't see any other definition that it is highway corruption.
Why did you, why did you deal with this particular application?
Okay, as far as this particular application, Brian. Now, we have over here with this particular application that they're asking the same thing that they're asking from the master plan, the same thing. Why is this not considered spot zoning? You guys are not the master plan committee, you guys are not the planning board to approve the master plan. You are the zoning board. If you are the zoning board and the same application got to the master plan, that means this, this is the biggest evidence, what we always scream, that this zoning board keeps on doing spot zoning, and they're not doing, they're doing what the master plan and the township committee should do and not what they should do. Now, I have a question for Brian. What is the hardship that the applicant is asking over here? What is the hardship that he has that he needs to change the zoning?
Mr. Klein, this is a use variance, it's not based on warranty.
So they don't need hardship?
They don't have to prove a hardship to get a use variance. They have to prove the positive benefits and that there would not be, or there would be minimal negative benefits. Hardships deal with a bulk variance, this is a density or a use variance.
So technically, they don't need hardship?
That's correct.
I just want to put it on the record. Does the applicant have hardship over here? Irrelevant, I'm asking a question.
Sir, there's been no proof presented as to any hardship.
So I could ask a question if he has hardship or not, and he does not have to answer.
No, no, I just said to you, sir, that he, I think he just said no, but I just said to you that there was no proof of a hardship. We're not, I mean, the zoning board is not going to take that into consideration. He hasn't said he has a hardship.
And again, as far as the higher density, lower density, not speaking about that. My only comment was, I'm not objecting or being for it or against it, I don't live there. Only thing that bothers me is, is the corruption. Thank you.
Anyone else, please step up?
Yes, sir, would you raise your right hand? You swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes, I do. My name is Robert Salter, S-A-L-T-E-R.
S-A-L?
S-A-L-T-E-R.
Salter, thank you.
I live at 2 Maplehurst Avenue. I'm not like this guy, I don't care about corruption. I just want to say, I know the last meeting they brought this up, the chairman had said that the number of houses that they wanted to put on there was 30 per, you know, the 10 acres, the 12 acres, whatever, and you said you'd like to see more luxury homes, less density. And Mr. Flannery's talking about adding a road that goes from Drake to Cross Street, and how that's going to alleviate things. I don't believe that's going to alleviate anything because there's a bunch of misnomers and labels going around about smart growth, and a lot of times, it doesn't seem like it's real smart. Single-family homes that really aren't single-family homes, it's just a hidden label for a duplex because they all have full basements, they'll all end up renting out. So now you're taking 30 homes that are going to have 60 families, and you've got to figure at least four cars per family, so you're throwing out 120 cars or more out in the traffic. And one road from Drake to Cross Street is not going to alleviate any traffic. And like you said, until the county decides in their infinite wisdom to finally widen Cross Street, you're just adding to the influx of just haphazard driving and everything. There was an accident two weeks ago on Cross Street, right on the corner, Sunday, not a lot of traffic, but still was an accident because people don't pay attention to the way they drive. They text, they're on the phone, and some poor girl got hit between two cars, a three-car accident, her car got trashed out. So, and one person, a young guy, he got banged up pretty good, they took him off in the ambulance and everything. So, I mean, things like this, it's just, you guys got to consider this, this is, you know, your job, like Mr. Klein said, you do the zoning, so you have to decide how many houses you're going to, go back to Flannery and his group about, that they can put on this priest property. So luxurious homes that you talked about before, I was sitting there going, great, that's cool, I think that's the best thing you can do. But to sit here and go from 30 to 29, or even 20 or something like that, you know, that's, that's pushing. Get it down to 18 or something. Make it where these people have room to grow. Make them stick to a single-family home. Instead of saying, hey, you know, you buy a luxury home and now you're going to rip out to somebody else, and now all of a sudden, you're just adding more traffic, you're adding more population, and it just gets worse. So do the smart growth. And the threat that these people keep coming up with, and it's, again, it's not, I don't like Flannery or any developers or project people or anything, or planners, it's like, to use the threat of, well, if we don't get this, they'll put a school there. It's like, come on. Again, do the smart growth. So...
To your question, you heard my opening comments to this application. To, you heard my opening comments to this application, I specifically made it clear that we will not commit to a number of 30, 28, 27. Again, if anybody comes in later on with this plan, I have to tell them, two minutes, I want to see 25 or 24 units.
And I can appreciate that.
Based what it is, but we have to give them a number to start because we know that 40,000 square foot lots are not going to happen anywhere.
Right. I can appreciate that, but like I said, I'm just hoping that you guys will sit there and come up with an appropriate number. Not one that's overly populated, not, you know...
We don't want it to look like a...
Yeah, we don't want you to sit there and put two houses on there, I mean...
We don't want it to look like a square pegged around hole was pushed in.
Right.
And at the same time, we're going to look very closely at the widening of Cross Street.
Right, and that's something else...
That moves a lot forward, a lot further, I'm sorry, a lot further than it was a month ago and even four years ago.
Well, I just hope they widen it, put a lot of traffic lights on there because it is...
When I read, that's what's in the plan.
Because it's atrocious right there, so I just expect you guys to do the right thing and you, and make it smart growth.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, you have to go?
I affirm, David Bender, 160 Colonial Drive.
Could you spell your last name?
B-E-M-D-E-R.
And your first name, sir?
David, D-O-V-I-D.
Thank you.
Chairman, one question. Is this going to be based on if Cross Street does get widened, like, are they going to be able to come back and build regardless of what happens? Are you going to hold them to it? Is that what they're asking for, and now they're only going to get, if, if the plans are already set and sealed as opposed to now where they're just, the county is discussing it, but nothing has been set in stone, and nobody's actually committed, the county is not committed to saying that they're going to do it?
Tell you on its truth, and then I'll look into that question, and that's going to be discussed during the site plan, to see how many units we want to put in, to see how I want to do it at that point, with excellent units. Whereas Cross Street has to widen, we'll discuss it at that point.
It's not contingent of that, technically, you could come back and technically, you could get approval for 29 houses with Cross the way it is right now, correct? Technically, speaking.
Technically, speaking. The question is if we will do it in the site plan because of a lot of issues at stake, which is one of them is going to be Cross Street widening or not.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? Swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, you have to go?
I do. Walton is, I live on Newport Avenue, which is on Cross Street.
Walton, could you spell your last name?
It's R-L-U-C-A-S.
L-U-C-A-N?
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
You live where?
On Newport, Newport Ave.
On Newport.
Okay. I've been there since 1979, and I live on two acres. When I built it, it was A1 zoning, which is two acres. That area has, I've said this to this committee once, I've been to the planning board with the same kind of comment, and also to the town committee, that area has some good zoning. And the good zoning is an example, is there are some commercial, there's the phone company there on James, and I'm sure you're familiar with that, I heard you guys talk about that once. Jay Bus Service, there's Coax Construction, there's Lakewood, bit of commercial, good zoning.
That's a commercial zone.
Commercial zoning. All right, there's good zoning for seniors. You've got fairways out there, good zoning for seniors. What's missing in this whole area, just good zoning for recreation, golf course, what's missing is homes, something for families. There's nothing, stand across in James, and there's nothing, there's nothing there for families. It's missing home, you're missing homes for families. What's happening out there, again, I've been here since 1979, what's happening is, nobody wants one acre. When I moved most of that land out there, it's owned by folks who have been there before me. So what's happening one by one, when folks are retired, right, they get gray hair, want to retire, they want to move away, no one wants to buy the property because it's not zoned for homes. Nobody out there, so who's buying them all but schools? Our schools are the only ones building. About four or five years ago, I went around, at that time, there were about 15 schools, I remember, I went around, took pictures of them all, this is for a planning board thing, and they set up over 50 acres, there's over 50 acres of schools from James and Cross, draw a little circle around there, and it's only a half a mile to Jackson. So that half a mile really needs homes, that's what it needs. What's happening relative to traffic is this, the state, a couple, a few years ago, I'm sure you were up all this, did the traffic study, and they found the rest of the state does, the traffic starts at 7:00, 8:00 in the morning, they found Lakewood is, school times, 9 o'clock in the morning. When, again, when the fairways came, there are 1,100 homes out there, 1,100 homes, there was no appreciable notice and traffic. I lived there. When, 1,100 homes, when Eagle Ridge came, 200 golfers a day, parties, banquets, birthdays, holidays, no increase in traffic, there's not even a traffic light where the golf courses, no traffic. About 10 years ago, the zoning changed for schools and guess, well, that's where it is. So what's happening now, when people want to retire out there, one by one, they, no one wants to buy. Buy a school, boom. And right now, they're screaming, where's schools coming? On Newport, they're out there paving right now, they're paving the driveway, so that's two acres with 50 kids, 50 buses, 50 cars. Right across the street from it, it's another on Newport, the school now bought that one, and that school is another two acres, 50 kids, 50 cars, more. One down the end by Bellevue, another school, over one acre.
You have 30 seconds left.
Thank you. So my point is, it needs homes, homes with less traffic than schools. And, I thank you.
Thank you.
All right?
Have a wonderful night. You, Kevin, for your own. Anyone else, please, come over here, please step up?
Raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, you have to go?
Yes, I do.
Could you give your full name and spell your last?
Michael Chermak, that's C-Z-E-R-N-A-K.
Getting closer, I couldn't hear you.
Michael Chermak, C-Z-E-R-N-A-K.
Thank you.
Okay. I live on Serenity Way in Serenity Estates, that was recently developed, the block was recently developed. So I've been observing, I'll just talk about the traffic patterns first, and I would like to, sorry, I would like to speak in favor of having residential lots as opposed to zoning it as an R40, because the roads are fairly narrow, and I see that most of the traffic is actually generated by the schools in the area, and especially the buses that come down Drake Road and Neiman, they come really quickly, and I don't know if you're familiar, there's a, in a right angle, exactly in the middle of Drake Road, that angle causes, I mean, it's really dangerous, I see people walking by, they almost get hit by buses all the time. Not only that, a lot of the buses come into Serenity Way to turn around in cul-de-sac at the end. I've been walking with my daughter and almost gotten hit myself multiple times. All the traffic comes down from Cross to Neiman, there is no traffic light there, and people get impatient because the line is long, and they just go without looking, and that just creates a real safety hazard. Another thing I'd like to speak about is, right now, the neighborhood is really beautiful. And the fact is that R40s are just going to be bought by schools and other commercial, used as commercial properties. It really destroys the beauty of the neighborhood. On Neiman, there was an entire forest that was knocked down. If we have residential zoning, then, you know, perhaps we can keep some of the trees, keep some of the beauty of the neighborhood. Another thing that Mr. Flannery mentioned was that maybe we can improve the curve on Drake Road. I myself have seen an accident over there. If we can improve that curve, it would really enhance the safety of the neighborhood for walkers and for drivers. I've spoken to a lot of the neighbors, a lot of people that live in the area, they all seem in favor of, most seem in favor of having residential zoning as opposed to commercial, so I would really, I think that it would actually enhance and improve the neighborhood tremendously.
Anyone else?
Sir, would you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, you have to go?
Menachem Leffgut.
You have to get closer, spell your last.
Leffgut, L-E-F-K-O-W-I-T-Z.
You've got to go to begin, L-E-F.
K-O-W-I-T-Z.
And your first name was?
Menachem, M-E-N-A-C-H-E-M.
Thank you.
I live in this neighborhood, I live off White by Olive, and this, I'm very much in favor of this, of a, I live, I live by Olive Court.
Where is that?
Olive Court is off White, so this, this, this project would back up. This project would back up.
Sorry, you have to get the mic closer, pull it closer, please. Thank you.
Come to the side of the podium if you have to.
I live in this neighborhood, I like this neighborhood to be residential, we don't want any schools in the neighborhood, and it's important that, to do whatever we could to keep it as a residential neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir, would you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes.
Your full name is, spell your last name.
Sam Schulman, S-C-H-U-L-M-A-N. I live at 59 Drake Road. I'd rather see the, I'm all in favor of the, if you do R12 and have the houses there instead of having schools in big buildings. When I look out, I've been there since 1964. I'd rather go outside, see houses, people out there, wave to my neighbor, than see a big building and a school, so I'm all in favor of keeping it residential and having houses built instead of schools. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else, please step up?
Yes, ma'am. Raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes. Ariel Schulman, S-C-H-U-L-M-A-N. I too much rather see beautiful homes with landscaping. Currently, there's a garbage situation, it's not nice, there's garbage everywhere. The schools, I have no objections to schools, but I think that making residential homes into schools seems to be an issue because they're not meant for buses to go in and out. Our area of Lakewood, I've been there for 30 years, it's countrywide paving, that's why the roads are falling apart, there's no shoulder to the roads because it's rural. So a lot of things are going to have to be done. I think that the curve on Drake Road is an issue, the more traffic that there is, traffic patterns, I'd like to see, even if it went from Drake Road straight out to Cross Street, I'd even like to see the other way go straight out to White Road, and have a nice cross-section with a traffic light or a four-way stop. But I think it needs to be done. I'd like to see more homes that look nice instead of the garbage that's around the area now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir, would you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I affirm. David, N-D-I-K, 55 Chukano's, I'm a part, Chukano's track. I'm a part owner of the property directly to the south of the property in question here. Three quick points. One is, I think it's fantastic if the developer will bring sort to the area, I think everybody benefits, people who live there now, the schools that are there now. Second point is, there's, hasn't been raised, there's been almost a rezoning of the area when we received our tax bills a few days ago. I know my taxes on the property went up by about sevenfold. So nobody is going to be able to afford to build a structure, a single-family house on R40 in that area very easily. It's gone way, way up. So it's going to either be a school, or it's going to have to be subdivided to smaller properties. And I think everybody who's spoken said they'd like to see nice properties, I'd love to see nice properties in the area, and be able to subdivide a mix of schools and nice houses, and I think that this developer is proposing a good beginning to that, and as long as we see some widening of Cross Street, I think it would be an amazing plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I affirm.
And your full name and spell your last?
Gruenberger, G-R-U-N-B-E-R-G-E.
Chayen Grunberger, G-R-U-N-B-E-R-G-E-R. Six Serenity Way. I'd just like to echo what was said before. I moved onto Drake around four and a half years ago, something like that, and then since moved to Serenity. It was a very beautiful street, very quiet, but that shit has long sailed. At this point, we've got way too many schools and the kids have a lot of schools to choose from, but no neighbors. We'd love to see some more residential homes and less schools.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, post to the public. Any comments on board members, Mr. Pepper? Any comments?
Yes.
Any comments on board members? If not, oh, go ahead.
To the chair, I just want to answer a question you had raised before regarding, before, in my situation, when these builders and agents would come and fill the board and rent schools or what else they could put on there, I would take it with a grain of salt. Unfortunately, now I have a school right next to my house with duplex trailers, okay? Instead of having, it was the house, the bird, the bed. Double white, double white trailer. I also see when you drive down, because I visit the site, all the schools going around, not only in the, in the R forty zone, but also in the industrial park, wherever they could fit it, okay? So though, before they used to say, well, you can do it, well, what's really happened in Lakewood is that they're really doing it. Because the amount of kids, you're looking at thirty-five thousand kids. My wife's a school teacher here, the public school only has six thousand kids. The private schools have close to forty thousand kids. So you have to have schools. And, you know, what we're trying to do here is really evaluate what is better, okay? Seeing what's going on, I'm for one, looking at better housing than just to add another school in the area that's already dense with tons of schools. And I see the garbage, I'm living, there's three houses down from where I live. So, you know, I don't want you to think that it's, you're being threatened by that. I understand what you're saying and you can't respond to me, but I just want you to know that we're taking it very seriously because it's no longer just a threat, it's really happening. Especially if you have forty-eight, enough acres to be able to do it.
And I know I can't respond, but I just want to say, I'm not opposed.
Houses.
Just opposed to too many houses. Okay. Any other comments on board members, have questions?
It was brought up earlier about spot zoning. Can you explain what exactly what that means and how it affects, or does it affect this application?
Well, there's a lot of cases that have been written to define spot zoning. And there's hundreds of cases, but generally speaking, this is a large tract. Spot zoning, generally speaking, and making examples, it's a small lot surrounded by different uses, and it sticks out like a sore thumb. And I don't know, if you wanted to go forward with this application, mind you, it would not be spot zoning.
I just wanted to add that, you know, I want to, I want to agree with what Obie said. Well, I mean, with facing schools, not schools, because of the need for housing, I agree with that. But I think, I mean, absolutely, absolutely. But I think there's also, there's just a need for nice homes, single-family, large plots. It's just, it's a non-existent commodity in Lakewood. And, you know, if the trend would be to build houses on fifteen thousand square foot lots and have a nice place for people to live, not living in duplexes or row houses, I think it's an improvement for the community.
And I would be glad to touch the money, the number.
That's going to be up to, up to Mr. Pepper, if he wants to go for a vote or not. So if you want to say your comment or whatever.
I would say that, I think we've grown to learn that R forty is not the right thing anymore. The question is, is it R fifteen or is it R eighteen or is it R twenty, or is it?
Correct, so with regard, I don't want to cut you off.
That's what you want.
So, a few things that I really.
Before you continue, I just wanted to pick up on the sentiment of my fellow board members here and to repeat what I said before, that if we were to put in here nice and juridical homes like you see up in Poplaw, Poplaw Drive, Clearview, Clearview, up, up, is that, Olive? All of, all those nice houses. That's the type of convey, but I'm envisioning over here, I'm not envisioning here, another single-family, small little houses. I'm envisioning here something exquisite, something nice to keep the range, Cross Street, Neiman, White Street, rural aura in place, just with some beautiful homes. And if we can accomplish that on the site plan, that'll be, that'll be great. And we take the neighbors, whatever, under the name, into consideration to, to, to lend those houses among the trees that are there, if they are true. I think this, this is a horse farm.
There are some trees, there was a horse farm, or it was a lord's farm. Or it was a horse farm, the other was a nice water lawn.
Yeah, you know, blend it in, keep it nice, keep it vulnerable, then, then, then. I would definitely want to see on the site plan.
So if I could just sum up, again, we're not asking for a vote tonight, we would like the full seven members to vote, so it'll be a seven member, we'll have to listen to it. I'd like, if I can, just to sum up a few points and some issues that were raised and then be a voter later date. Again, on behalf of this applicant, and actually many applicants, when we come before the board and we talk about, if it's not going to be a house, it's going to be a school, it's not a threat, it's reality. And I appreciate that Obie and Judo, you know, acknowledged that. You know, if it was maybe a few years ago, I'd understand that. But, you know, people say, you know, there's a new thing in town, you say it's true. So anything that's being said, up, everyone, it repeats it and repeats it and repeats it. But the reality is, go up there, I grew up in this area, I grew up around the corner from it and I travel on it probably four times a week. It's a school and every, and I take a, sometimes I drive past the property, take a double take and you say, wait a second, what's going on there, what happened there? So this applicant is not looking to change the entire area. The area has some single-family housing in it, they're not on our forties. Our forties doesn't work anymore. There is a need for housing. This applicant is saying, look, we understand that our four doesn't work and that R twelve probably is off throughout the whole application, won't work either. But we need to have the parameters to come back to the board and say, we're going to design some. There will be some lots that will be twelve, thirteen, fourteen, maybe more, maybe there'll be a lot that's seventeen or eighteen thousand. But when we go back to it, we're going to have to look at the plan and see what works. We've given testimony, we're going to, when we come back for the site plan, we agree, we're going to the county. We're going to have to comply and the county only, it only works if the county says yes. We're on a county road. As Brian indicated, we're creating a through street. That through street, no matter what you say, is only going to help alleviate some of the traffic problems. There is a traffic problem there, the problem are the buses. The residential cars are not the issue. Yes, we're going to bring more residential cars, however, it's by doing it in the right, proper way. So, you know, at this point, if there's no other question.
Steve, you've got to realize, out of the twenty-nine lots, this is about fifteen, the rest are fifteen.
And we understand, and we're telling you, our application is for max and we know, let's be honest, I'm going back to my client saying, you're not getting that max. We're going back and we're going to do, maybe we'll flip it, maybe the majority is going to be the fifteen and there'll be one or two that are twelve. But we need to have flexibility to go ahead and design it and spend the money. But we completely understand what the board's comments were.
Now we're not voting tonight, what do you want to add?
So at this time, I guess, to Jerry, I don't know if this has happened yet, if this is the first one that's happened, but there's only been six members. We're asking for table, there's going to have to be a seventh member who's going to have to listen, certify and then, I don't know if we're going to have to come back, you tell me, are we coming back in two weeks? I would love to be able to come back in two weeks and say.
Well, we have a transcript in two weeks to listen to, where the table is.
Listening will be available.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well then, I was just having a correspondence in two weeks.
And again, I just wanted to clarify, there'd be no more comment, no more comment from either me, unless there's a question from the board or either the members, but there'd be no more public comment.
Before you continue, on your final decision, I told you another thing, one person that's going to be able to add to this vote is, which is not Tally, okay? And if he has any sort of conflict, he'll be backed down to six votes.
I'll have to deal with that, I, I'm unaware of any, I understand.
So.
I can't have you vote in six.
What?
I can't, right, but it's my right to have, I have seven, I'm just asking.
Five out of seven, yeah.
So, yeah, so I guess my request would be then, I apologize, if we could table this, the public, both the, my testimony, my professional testimony, as well as a public comment.
The hearing is closed.
Yes.
Steve, one thing, the votes are going to be voted tonight on you.
I have to ask my client. My client is deciding with all the dice.
Okay, that's you. You know, you have to have all the dice, for all the dice. We have to say, your final decision.
The motion is going to be to vote for this application, which is going to change it from R forty to something less and nothing less than R twelve.
That's correct.
Correct. And anything in between, and everything in between.
Correct. And we understand we're going to come back for the board for a site plan, you may tell us, every lot has to be R fourteen.
We got it, we got it.
So I'll make a motion to approve this application, or change it from R forty to anything else, anything plus eleven R twelve.
Okay, so I have a motion from Mayor Kelly, second from Mr. Riviet, Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
The House?
Yes.
Mr. Riviet?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
The Gonzales?
Yes.
The House?
Yes. Good night, good luck. Yeah. This is, I do want to use one favor.
Yes.
Do you remind what you heard tonight?
A hundred percent.
We're going to look at that site plan, it's very, very, it's very, very.
Thank you. Oh, you're not getting ready to be so quick because I'm here on the next applicant.
Oh. Oh yeah, we're going to go back to the first one, then we'll take a break.
Four zero two seven.
Four zero two seven.
I'm sorry, four two four six.
Oh, this is Mars? Okay. The notice was correct, why not, you know, just say all of this? That changed things around on it? Show the, how we don't have the plan?
It was by an old, certain, question, less than.
Okay.
We took a judgmental, like, twenty-one.
Okay.
Which one?
Four zero two seven. I'm sorry, four zero two four, can I watch the table, four zero two four?
Make a move.
Or, wait?
Four twenty-four. I make a motion to table forward.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second, I have a motion for mayor, second from Obie, Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
The House?
Yes.
Mr. Riviet?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
The votes?
Yes.
The Gonzales?
Yes.
Yes. Adam, Adam, I want to take a small application, so I can take a break after that's small, then I'll have the rest of my view.
You're the chairman.
Who's forty thirty, your applicant?
You're the chairman.
Who's here for forty thirty? Forty thirty? He's not here?
Uh, yeah, he's here.
Forty thirty is here.
Forty thirty is here?
Forty thirty is here.
Those come to double.
My next application will be a pretty long application, so I want to take yours first so I can move it out of the way, so take a break and then have the rest of the evening.
Which is the next one that you're saying is taking the rest of the night?
Maybe, maybe a long time.
Yeah, thirty-four.
Sorry, go ahead.
Four eighty-nine point oh five, about one forty-nine, on some zone, construction, side block. Attorney vote, and we have a plan in twenty-four, twenty-seventeen. We have to receive a minus seven to approve and variance we leave to construct one duplex structure on two given landline properties. We have to receive a variance we leave in the area, side block, second, and building coverage.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Actually, I haven't been here in a few months, so I'm sure you've, I'm sure you've missed me.
All right.
We're here, Mary Moinstein, on behalf of the applicant, Schmuel Zephren. We're all ready, we're good? We're here this evening for approval of one duplex structure consisting of two zero lot line lots on an existing lot located on Sterling Avenue. While duplexes are permitted in the R ten zone, they are only permitted on lot sizes of twelve thousand square feet or greater. Applicant is requesting a duplex on a lot size of ten thousand one hundred and forty-one square feet and hence is requesting a use variance for this duplex. Our testimony will show that this area was slated to be zoned R seven five in the master plan, in which case ten thousand square feet would be sufficient, but I'm going to let Brian provide that testimony in a little bit. We are requesting a few additional variances as well for side and rear yard setbacks and lot coverage. The rear yard setback is necessitated by the odd shape of the property. Our testimony will show that many duplexes have recently been approved in this area. This particular house is burnt out as a result of a fire, so is certainly in need of redevelopment. And point of fact, I call the board's attention to a particular application that you passed probably about five months ago, where the applicant was an end user. He was seeking, who was going to be living in one of the duplex units and he was seeking approval for a duplex on Somerset Avenue, which is right around the corner from this lot with some variances. This is a similar situation to that one, variance is different a little bit, but in this case as well, Mr. Zephren is an end user, his father-in-law, Mr. Burkowski, is the owner of this property and he intends to live in one of the units, so this is not a developer coming in just to develop, build a duplex for other people to live in. At this point, I'd like to ask to have Brian Flannery sworn.
Mr. Flannery, raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. As Mary indicates, this is an application for the construction of a duplex on a ten thousand one hundred and forty-one square foot lot. I have two exhibits marked. A one is a tax map showing the subject property in orange and the duplex development around it in blue. I have the outline of the duplex development, Linden Gardens, and I, I did it different so that you could see that it is duplexes, but they were not approved by this board. And there are duplexes on much smaller lots, not approved by this board. Well, I think in the context of the neighborhood, we need.
All those in blue are duplexes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Which is the one I was talking about.
Jerry, good way to answer, all those blue are in duplexes.
So, this particular area, and the reason there are so many in blue, the ones that were approved by this board appropriately, was based on the master plan. And the master plan of March thirteenth, two thousand and seven, on page seventy-four, says rezone both R ten zones east of the downtown areas, R seven five, to provide additional housing opportunities compatible with redevelopment of the areas. And I think the board is familiar, as Mary indicated, you can see on, on A one, the property that also has the side, the angled backyard that backs right up to this, was approved as a duplex on, on less than twelve thousand square feet. That also had some bulk variances because when you have a rear line like that and you have rectangular units, you end up.
Eating relief.
Eating relief.
Flannery, now there's the blue duplex behind the orange, where's the front, how does it get to the street?
Yeah, how does it?
It's on Somerset.
Oh. Here.
I, I, I.
This is Somerset, right?
Right. It's a square. It's like this, like both those properties are cut out at an angle, the way I see it.
The apartments with that.
Like this. Created a square. Two forty-five, A one square.
Right, they, and, and that's why this, this area is redeveloping thanks to the zoning board, and I hope that everybody that drives through there says this looks nicer thanks to the zoning board. You can tell the zoning board duplexes as opposed to those other ones because the fronts are nicer, they have landscaping that gets irrigated. Was that? The master plan of two thousand and seven on page thirty-five, under housing, says there's been a tremendous residential growth, but it concludes not all the demand has been met. The master plan, same master plan on page fifty-six, says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. And it's my testimony that this is redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. It's going to fit in well with the area, if you drive through that area, you see the nice duplexes going up and, and they do look very nice and they're providing the housing opportunities.
Brian, just a question, how does a house look nice if it's populated double the size of the other?
Well, in this particular case, as Mary indicated, this is a house that's being built for an end user. And the end user has a large family and he also has other reasons that he needs a larger unit. When you, when you look at this, we can see looking down that one unit is larger than the other. You're not going to see that when you drive by. So what you're going to have is two different housing sizes, one for a larger family like he has.
And the lot size, you're going to need twenty-five per house and the foot. In this context, it looks lopsided, you know, 25 per house and the foot.
It only looks lopsided if you're on top of it, looking at it. When you drive by on the street, it's not going to look lopsided.
Mayor, move the front elevation over here.
Right.
What? Is your client around?
So my client is on his way, but he was waiting for us to text him when he went out of order. That's why I keep turning around, because I can explain to you, I mean, I don't want to say it in his words, the reason he needs a house that large is that besides having a very large family, he has elderly parents who are going to be living with him, and he has a sister who is not well.
But then his parents are living in the small side.
No, the parents are not living in the small side. The parents are going to be living with him. I think he plans on selling the small side. But his parents are going to be living with him, and then he has a sister who's not well, who has a lot of medical issues, who comes to him all the time with a child. And again, if he'd be here, he would tell you all this because he told it to me this afternoon. He hopefully will be here before we finish this application, and he'll be able to provide that testimony himself. But I asked him the very same question that you did, why is it so lopsided? You know, why aren't they even? And that was the answer that I was given.
And it's my professional opinion, you see there's several jogs. If it was just two units that were all straight across, when you drove by it, it's going to look lopsided. When you look at it on a front elevation, it looks a little lopsided. If he had the money to get a perspective rendering and show you, it's separate jogged in areas.
Yeah, protections.
No, there's a...
Was that room in the back?
There would be four parking spaces per unit.
Brian? The room in the back I see is with a full bath. Is that a bathroom?
Says home office.
I know what it says, but last time I checked, I don't have a home office with a bathtub.
Well, when the applicant arrives, he can explain. But what he explained to me is that's where, when he has the sister come over, that's where it would be a room that they could use where he's taking care of her. And he has to take care of her on a regular type basis.
Kind of like a little apartment for him?
No, it's like a guest room.
It's more like a guest...
It's like a guest room that we all have in our houses for when we have company that comes from time to time. It's not an apartment, there's no kitchen.
No, and not label it a bedroom? Wouldn't that change another bedroom?
We can label it a bedroom if that's what you want. If it changes the parking, it changes the parking. It'll give extra parking. The one that says home office.
Right. It would have more appropriate than labeled a guest room. And a guest room, she's not driving with a car because she doesn't drive. Right. But when she's not there, he's going to use it as his office. You know, I have a room like that in my house. When the grandkids come over, you pull out the daybed, they sleep on the daybed. When they're gone, you got your computer and...
While he's coming, while he's coming...
Yeah, he is on his way.
Stairs going up to the attic. I know it's not by the side door, which is good.
Right.
So we have no way of putting this into another apartment up on top.
That is correct. There's no way to turn it into an apartment up on top, and there's not going to be two apartments in the basement either. There's only, there's only one set of stairs to the basement. There's only one way to access the basement from the outside.
Okay.
And it will definitely not be two apartments in the basement.
There can be outside.
For the narrow, in the narrow side, there's no steps from the outside from basement?
Uh, there are, yeah.
There are.
There are.
You can go to the attic from the outside.
Attic for sure. There can be an apartment in each one. One apartment.
And the narrow one is 1,400 square feet.
That's okay, it's very rental, these things.
Well, it's rental, 1,400.
You can't make two apartments down there.
The normal is 1,500, so this is 1,400. It's a little under it.
It's a lot smaller, right?
Yeah.
The one, the one on the left, I see the steps to the basement are on the side of the house.
Yes.
How far into the step back does that go? Left on the side?
The side step back is seven feet, the steps would be three feet, so you'd have four feet remaining.
Okay. Yeah?
What's the minimum that you need?
Let me open this to the public here. Anyone in the public?
I'm waiting, I gotta give an answer.
Hold on. He's checking it out to give you a minute.
Okay. While we're waiting, while we're waiting, Mrs. Zefrin, I'd like to open the...
Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to point out, that's on an angle. So it's 10 feet up by the front. So there's 4.2 feet from the, and it's labeled on the plan. 5.2 feet from the...
5.2, see, it has 5.2 feet.
Yes, yes.
5.42.
Okay, can we open this to the public? 4030? Yes.
Yes, 5.42.
We done? The 5.2?
5.42.
So, you raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm until the whole truth is all we got?
I affirm. So this time, we have an attorney that is straight. Not some attorney that is involved in interruption. Please don't interrupt me.
No, 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 talk about the application.
Please don't interrupt me.
I will interrupt you and let you talk about the application.
I am speaking about the application. That this applicant has a straight attorney, is not involved in unethical behavior. Simple as that. Now, about Brian. Brian claims that having a smaller side back sometimes is better, because like this, he could look in into the other person's window. Brian claims sometimes it's better not to have sidewalks. Like this, people don't walk on your property, and the kids don't, there's not, it's better to have bigger houses, smaller lots. Like this, the kids don't play outside unsupervised, he keep them inside the whole day. I'm just bringing this out because Brian keeps on claiming sometimes it's better higher density, sometimes he claims it's lower density. When you have an application that has three lots, and he wants to make it into two lots because they count, he disapprove them, so then he claims it's better to have lower density. But it all depends, Brian has explanation for why sometimes it needs higher, sometimes lower. The reason why sometimes it's better to have high density is when he sell it to Hasidim. Hasidim like it more dense. When he claims that, and therefore is, the master plan claims that we need more housing, but you need more housing for Brooklyn type of people, or you need more housing for Lakewood type of people. Lakewood type of people like smaller houses, it's cheaper. So when they build this, and over here you have two, you have a bigger and a smaller, so he's covered it completely with a master plan. The smaller one, the reason why I'm bringing this up, because when they were asked that this doesn't look so nice, you have one smaller, one bigger, the attorney came up with special reasons why it's done this way. And Brian gets up. "No, you don't understand, when you look on top and you look from the bottom and you look..." He's a very good, actually, engineer. Very good engineer, and everybody should use him because he knows how to put down stuff. But his way of talking and doing things and explaining things gave an opportunity to a lot of corruption to happen at times. No, no, Brian is doing his job, he's a good guy, but I'm just trying to bring out that he created a big problem in this town.
I just want to interrupt, I haven't heard one thing about this application. And I think it's only fair that...
Yes, four minutes.
He has four minutes to wrap up the application?
My four minutes is up?
Yes.
My four minutes is up?
Yes.
I'm asking, my four minutes is up?
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Not seen, no. Okay, let's come back to the, to the, to the application.
The applicant, Mr. Zefrin, is present, so if I could ask for him to be affirmed, absolutely. Mr. Zefrin, come to the microphone.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm until the whole truth is all we got?
Affirm.
And your full name?
Shmuel Yakov-Zefrin.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you want to address the, do you want to address the applicant?
Any questions? Please do.
Okay. Mr. Zefrin, the board was questioning the difference in the sizes between the two units. They noted that one of the units is significantly smaller than the other. Can you explain to the board why one of the units is larger than the other? And who's going to be living in these units?
Okay. This is my wife, so I wouldn't like to say she's here as well. We just had a baby a few weeks ago. Thank you. And it's our 10th child. Thank you, thank you. And we are, we have been renting all our lives, and our dream is to have our own home. We don't have any properties, nothing, zero. We don't have anything, zero, we don't have, not one property at our name, nothing, zero. We would love to be able to live in our own house, we don't have to, every time, get harassed by our landlords. We got, a landlord called us up a few months ago, he wants us out. We don't know where we're going to go. He wants us, he already pushed it off, and we're looking at just being sent out of our house where we are now, not knowing where to go. My father-in-law has this property, which they're thinking, if we can somehow have a unit which is big enough for our, to house us, which me, my wife, and my 10 children, if we just, if he would sell the other half, then he would be able to have the second half for ourselves that we can live. I have to add another thing, that I have elderly parents who I anticipate, I'm the oldest boy in the family, and also a family of 10 children, I take the brunt of a lot of the responsibilities in the family, and I anticipate that my parents, my father and my mother will move in with us so we can take care of them. My father was recently, he was in a wheelchair, he couldn't even, he wasn't even mobile. I also, and above that, I have a sister who has been sick for many years since she was a little girl, and as well, we very often have her at our house. Just this past weekend, she came straight from the hospital to my house, she stayed by us, we take care of them. It's my sister and her husband and her son. She should live and be well, she's going through a lot of hard, difficult medical issues, and this is, we're talking about overcrowding of our house, we have to, we have to have space. We have 10 children, we have my elderly parents, we have my sister who's sick. I'm asking, I'm begging, please, this is, I'm not, I'm not a rich man that's coming here and asking for more money, I just need to survive. That's all I'm asking for. I'm asking, I'm not a typical person who's looking, I'm just looking to survive, to be able to breathe, to be able to live, and my children should have place to, we shouldn't have to double up and triple up. We have to, every time, my parents have to come, my sister comes, my children have to sleep on the floor. It's not, it's not a way to live.
Mr. Spence?
Okay.
That's Italian for enough.
Okay.
Okay.
I just...
I'd like to cross-examine this witness.
Excuse me, thank you.
I have a right to cross-examine him. Yes.
Yeah, let us finish.
Okay, any, anything else about the session?
I think we've made our case. I think we're good unless the board has any other questions.
Okay. Fine, anyone else, any board comment, council board members? Let's have a motion.
No, no, hold on, Mr. Klein has the right to ask questions.
Since when?
He tells us.
It was a new witness came up after I spoke.
Because this gentleman, because of the way he jumped back and forth between the public and I, he has the right to ask me questions.
Okay.
A new witness came up. Sorry. Still very bad for the board. Okay, I would like to ask you, do you know what happened with the fire that was mentioned that the house burned down? You have an...
Objection, it's irrelevant, it's not his house, it's his father-in-law's house, and he doesn't have to answer the question.
What are you planning to do with the basement?
There's already been testimony there'll be a...
There'll be an apartment in the basement. We testified that there's going to be an apartment in the basement. One apartment in the basement, which is legal.
One apartment in the basement? How many bedrooms?
You've said it four times.
We told, and we said on the record, there's going to be one apartment in the basement which is legal, it will be in accordance with all township codes.
One in each unit.
One in each unit.
I just have a right to question the witness.
We're giving you the answer.
But I have a right to question the witness, and I questioned him.
Okay.
And I don't know why I'm accused of, he didn't answer it, the attorney answered it. I questioned the witness, he got up. What? But the witness is here and he refused to answer. What?
The attorney can answer for him. You have a representation.
Okay. Thank you. So your interpretation is that if somebody comes and testifies themselves, without, with attorney being present, I don't have a right to cross-examine him, I only could cross-examine the attorney because he has an attorney. If he chooses to have his attorney testify for him, it's okay. I'm just mentioning the law, I think is, it's not correct that I have no right of questioning the witness himself once he stood up and testified.
I'm not taking the bait, are you finished, sir?
Yes, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any final comments?
One more.
Mr. Gross, you need to speak up.
I have a question. You said your, your father was...
This question, the question's for the applicant?
You said your father was wheelchair bound, so...
My father.
Your father.
No, 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 he was wheelchair-bound, now, he's got on, he's on his own feet, he was on a cane, and he's going through difficulties, that's what I'm saying.
No, I'm just wondering if you've been, was on the couch with the rent, are you getting accessible if your father's wheelchair bound?
See, he, no, he can walk. He can walk, but he, you know, he's, he's going through ups and downs, you know what I'm saying? But he, right now presently, he is walking, he's able to walk. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
As far as the bathroom, are you making the bathroom handicap accessible? You've mentioned that your mom's all the time...
Yes.
Or me, yes?
Excuse me?
Yes, you don't get home from the bathroom?
Yes, your sister.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the petition.
I have a motion from Mayor Kelly and I have a motion from Mr. Moby.
Okay, we're approving it with the, with the office as is?
As is, the way you see it, with the standard features, of course...
Not applying an extra parking spot.
With the, with the standard features, the half-brake, three-fourth brake, landscaping, and all that other stuff, that would only go in the front.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So I have a motion from Mr. Kelly and I have a second from Moby. Madam Secretary of Labor, please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
The House?
Yes.
Mr. Riviet?
Yes.
Mr. Engle?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
The Gattala?
Yes.
The Howard.
Yes. Good night, and good luck.
Thank you so much.
When we come back, we're gonna go back to appeal number of thirty-nine seventy-one A, KG Investments.
Whatever God wants. All right.
Hold on.
One second.
I'm double.
Yeah, start, I'll get it.
I'm double.
You gotta go X, A, B, C.
We don't want a wedding. You say it's, no wedding. No, no, you're explaining why you want to.
Can I say something else?
I'm listening.
I'm telling you, it's not, it's not. I'm mentioning, I'm breaking it up. I have to mention, that we did a search. You are.
I like, I like your book. After calling, it was a long guy. It's a smart move.
Okay. Is there, is there, yes, the name?
In church, yes.
Is that, is that in church?
They're gonna be there five years from now.
I think we're gonna want to sell, I'm moving away.
About five years.
You just put it in the verging, verging. Oh, that's a nice word being. I had twenty minutes.
Taking everyone.
Yeah.
I'm so, I'm so.
I'm the increase.
Can't get rid of this.
You're pretty good?
Yeah, we're still, we're still, uh, good. Are you enjoying the fireworks? What? I actually both, I do really much, except I don't think so. All right, so we're not Brian, first application, two high density, second one those two.
Does Klein think so, well?
I don't know, but I'm gonna use that in my application.
Yeah.
Mr. Klein approved. The over-ordere is more density.
Oh, it's only the church.
Oh, church.
It's all the church.
How come, how come you like? Uh, they finished the lap. And you're fine. He knows, but I don't know the longer over here. Yeah, yeah.
Which way do you have to be, you never know when the door's gonna open.
Right.
I bet the basis is I should wait.
Well, Klein, Klein will get up and use up his four minutes, and then one.
How do they do the timer?
Ah. Last week. Yes. Ah, gosh. Just one thing after another. So you're out of the hospital? No, no, it's all, we have. At this point, I give up. Please assist us, or maybe the seven, that's, I don't think so. That's good, that's, that's good. Yeah, that's good. Are we ready? All right, showtime, let's go. I didn't get that memo. Right. Right, right. Yeah. Changing the story.
All right. All right, let's go. Moving forward. Appeal number thirty-nine seventy-one A, KG Investments. Oh, you're right. I guess it was an easy way to get you in. What else?
They don't want me in the same room as Morgan.
Thirty-nine seventy-one A, we're doing?
Yes, thirty-nine seventy-one A.
Seven forty-two ocean area, lot five forty-eight, lot sixty-six, two eighty-one, two eighty-two, R twenty zone, preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan, a Terry Road engineer plan in May eighth, twenty seventeen. The applicant received a bifurcated use variance approval to allow for the construction of a two-story office building with a catering facility in the basement, complete plumbing and amenities on the separate property under resolution number thirty-nine seventy-one. The applicant receiving preliminary and final major site plan for the construction of a two-story office building with two central halls in the basement.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. If I can just add to what Fran indicated we're asking for, as Fran did indicate, we did previously receive use variances approval for a two-story office building with a catering facility in the basement, which the plans, the site plan you have in front of you is for a three-story office building with, and I'll explain in a second, two catering facilities in the basement. I have noticed for those two additional use variances, one being the additional third floor, and two being the additional hall, and second, the catering facility in the basement. Just so I can clarify first on the catering facility, as my client is not looking to do a large hall for, a hall for weddings, these are more for smaller catering, smaller catering events. So what he has done is, he's basically built two rooms, same one entrance, there's a hallway in between, and you have architectural plans. However, we're asking for really some additional square footage. During the original application, we received the proposed catering hall will be no larger than six thousand square feet, including the kitchen. But the plans you have before, you believe, show the two rooms combined for a little bit over seven thousand square feet, and then there is a kitchen behind it. It's only one kitchen that will be utilized for the two rooms, but as I indicated again, we're just looking for a smaller room to rent out, so theoretically, there could be two parties going on. What we are offering the board, what we, what was not imposed on the first application, is we are putting a restriction that those catering facilities will not be utilized during the day, they will only be utilized at night. The reason for that is that we're not looking to interfere with our office space, again, right now, two-story, and we will speak about the third story in a second. So you, you are going to have here a restriction that basically until 5:00 PM, that catering facility cannot be used. Brian will testify that either at the six thousand, or even at the larger, seven-plus-thousand square feet of the actual catering facility, we have more than sufficient parking, in that we have proposed one hundred and forty-eight spaces, which is more than sufficient for just the catering facility. As far as the, after looking back at the plans, the applicant decided he wanted to see if he could include a third story in that the parking is sufficient, and Brian will testify, if we take out the common areas, and take out the basement, because the basement's not gonna be used during the same time period, we have more than sufficient parking, and there was a need for, for the office space. So I guess my request, and I, I did speak with Jerry before the hearing started, to ask him how we want to go about the process, I believe the board should have, on each of these additional uses, or he'd ask for a vote, so that I know I can then go forward with the site plan, which is, which is, has been proposed.
Let me understand this, you're forfeiting the old use?
No. I'm not, I'm not forfeiting, I'm asking for an additional third, two, two additional items. One for, we already have a two-story office building, we're asking for, if the board will do an additional use for a third story.
Let me, let me understand this correctly. Break it down for me, what was the old?
Two-story office, I'll tell you, two-story office building with.
With how many parking spaces?
Hundred, well, there was a use, but I believe it was the same one hundred and forty-eight space.
Forty-eight spaces? Two additional, two, two door spaces, but one hundred and forty-eight spaces?
Right, right. Yes.
That was on the, on the use variance?
With, with a, with a catering facility in the basement. Chairman, originally it'd be thirty-six thousand square feet of office, eighteen thousand per four.
I'm wondering, I know.
And.
Thirty-six thousand.
Eight, oh, sorry.
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand of two fours, now they want whatever, eighteen times three, it's fifty-four.
Okay, so originally, was it a, a final use variance, or was a new use variance based on site? Was it a bifurcated application?
No, it was bifurcated, yes.
So, so, so we didn't give you anything then? So you came in at that point saying that you want to bifurcate the application?
Correct.
You want a two-story office building?
With a, with a catering.
On the basement, and we'll talk on site, I can imagine, we'll talk on site, on parking.
Correct.
Now you're coming back and saying that you want to have the use redone, because you want to have three stories?
Correct.
And two catering facilities with two hundred and eighty-one, two hundred and thirty-one spaces?
No.
Two hundred and thirty-one?
No.
I heard one forty-eight.
No, one forty-eight.
Required one thirty-eight, or required two thirty-one?
Oh, well.
Requires two thirty-one.
Yes.
So, in my language, it sounds like that, we're redoing the whole park use variance.
Again, we're asking for an additional.
I, I just broke it down.
Yeah. So now, right, and now, and.
You want something else?
Well, yeah, it's a new use, it's a new use, I mean, he's not foregoing his old one.
Correct.
But it's a new application.
Yes, it's a new application, and you have the site plan in front of you. Yes, but my.
Wait, what is it?
Got it.
Does it conform with the height? No, that's, it needs to.
So the height, so you're asking, is it height variance?
Correct.
The height, the use variance.
This came up, this was come up on the original application.
The height?
There was, there was discussion whether you could have, there was some discussion to have three floors then, and it was, you want to build a basement, a lower basement or something, have three floors.
We never had, we never had a proposal for a three, three office stories, we had a basement and two stories. There was never a proposal at, at the previous. My point, Mr. Chairman, is that I'm just saying to you, if we don't get to the point where, where the board is acceptable with the two additional uses, then the site plan, there's no point in giving testimony, going forward with that site plan. I, I think we have testimony, I'll get Brian this morning in a minute, and we'll give the testimony as to why we think those two additional uses are acceptable. If you feel that's okay, we will then go forward, the site plan has been provided to you, we will then go forward on, with the testimony of the site plan. If you don't get to that point, there's no point in doing testimony on the site plan if you still have questions on, on the use.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So, and again, just, okay.
Do you swear or affirm to fill the whole through sale?
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. With respect to the use on this property, the circumstances are the same as.
Right, right, you, you must have all three floors, the use of all three floors, right?
Yes, I, I'm testifying on the use that we're asking for this evening, which is three floors, so we're forty-five feet high, ten feet above the thirty-five. Forty-five.
Yeah.
Ten feet above the, what the ordinance stipulates for the OS zone. Why this property is in the OS zone is beyond me. The OS zone is something where you put the park, and the park's in the OS zone, which makes sense. We went through all that at the, the original hearing. All that still applies. The, the difference now is we're asking for a taller building. I think the taller building, it lays out better where we're looking for the same usable square feet of office, which would be generated by the one hundred and forty-eight parking spaces. And there's no secret as to why we're doing one hundred and forty-eight parking spaces, because if we do one hundred and fifty, we have to go get a CAPR permit, and we may as well just shoot the applicant in the head and sell his property to the highest bidder. A CAPR permit on this size piece of property goes nowhere, so.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Brian, but let me understand, so if you do need two hundred and thirty-one, and you're hoping that it can be four feet?
Well, the two hundred and thirty-one is per the ordinance. I intend to testify on why it's my opinion that although the ordinance says two hundred and thirty-one is what is required, because of the nature of the uses, and as Adam indicated, we're offering, we're stipulating that we're gonna restrict the simpahol use to the non-work hours. So we have offices that will be closed in the evening, and, and there's one hundred and forty-eight parking spaces that is needed for the forty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-four square feet.
eighty-four square feet of office.
But it's fifty-four thousand square feet of the whole building.
Well, the, the total floor area of the whole building is sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy feet.
So that includes the basement?
That includes the basement.
Well, that's the basement, you've got fifty-four thousand square feet of office space.
Well, the plans show the office, the net usable office area on each floor, and the first floor, it's thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four, and that's because you have a lobby and you have less usable. And then it's fifteen thousand square feet per floor. You add those three numbers together, you get forty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-four square feet.
Hold on, come back, is the first floor, all right, now, there's the first floor and the second floor, and that was at the time the application was approved, forgetting the basement, thirty-six thousand square foot, first and second floor.
That's what was approved, yes.
Okay, so you want to go to the third floor, same footprint, why wouldn't it be fifty-four thousand square?
Well, it's not exactly the same footprint, the footprint of the building is seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty-six square feet for the building that's proposed. But the usable area in there, when you take out the hallways and the other nonusable areas, comes to roughly fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty, well, according to the architect, fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty-five square feet on the second and third floor, and the first floor is less than that because there's more lobby area. So my testimony is, and we're getting ahead of ourselves on the parking variance.
No, I, I, I want to, I think the board wants to know right now, what's the square footage for the three floors that you're suggesting?
And then I have a question, Terry.
The footprint is seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty-six square feet.
Terry, on that, on that footprint, right?
Yes.
What is the ordinance? One per how much square foot, is it per footprint or the per usable?
Let's figure out how many square feet we need, isn't that fifty-four thousand square feet?
Fifty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight.
So how do you get to sixty-nine thousand?
Sixty-nine thousand is including the basement.
Well, the basement is seven thousand feet.
The basement, the basement is the same, the same area, the simpahol is seven thousand.
So let me answer your question, Terry. Parking is calculated by the footprint or by the usable space?
It's calculated, my standing, is per floor, is that correct, Brian?
Look, per floor.
That's what the ordinance stipulates, and as Mr. Klein will tell you, when I come to the board, I explain what's actually needed, in my opinion. And it's not always, if you have a large lobby, you don't need parking spaces for the lobby.
Obviously, it was calculated by the groves, it's because it takes into account the lobbies and the basements and elevator shafts, it offsets some more extra parking space to the facility. That's the way it should do, that's not, that's not a math, a hunch of science.
Right, but there are a lot of office buildings that don't have the lobbies, and they have the same parking requirement, so you're-
I didn't say that, I just said it's not exact science.
It's not exactly, we agree.
Continue, continue.
Okay, so, so, so we're, the use variance that we received had conditions in it that we don't meet, so we need a new use variance in order for the site plan to be entertained.
Is the building bigger than the old use variance?
Well, it's, it's a, it's, no, it's not bigger than, than the, the building, I-
It's the same footprint.
Same footprint.
I, I thought the other footprint was eighteen thousand square feet, but I-
So it's only on one floor, it's not any bigger, side yards, backyard, setbacks?
Yes, yes. So, now we're asking for the, the third floor, and we're asking for the basement, we have specifics on the simpahol when we first came, the simpahol was an idea, the applicant's done research on what makes sense for the simpaholes, and as Adam indicates, the target market is not weddings, it's, it's smaller events, and the three thousand and change Is, we've shown two, three thousand plus simpaholes with one shared kitchen. So we're asking for a use variance on this, and the reasoning for the use variance is the same reasoning that we had when we came here initially, only now we're asking for more, and the reasoning for more is pretty clear, we have, we're in between Ocean Avenue and, and the park. On the western side of us, the park, on the eastern side of us is the church, it doesn't make sense to be, to be OS zone. The views that you would get from the third-floor offices would, would be a benefit to the people who, who use the offices, and to my way of thinking, the question really comes down to, does the parking work? If the board is not convinced, based on our testimony, that the parking works, well then the site plan doesn't work. If the, if the parking does work, I wouldn't understand why the board would feel that a forty-five-foot-high building that just overlooks the park and is on a state highway and is next to the church would be a detriment. The only-
Mr. Flannery, one of the conditions of the prior use approval was that at the time of site plan application, the applicant will comply with the OS bulk requirements, including parking requirements.
Yes, that's why we're asking for a new use variance.
You're not going to be complying with the parking requirement?
We are not going to be complying with it, so the, the old one, and, you know, the chairman asked, are we walking away from that? No, if the board votes no on the new one, well then we're going to have to go back to the old one. But I'm here trying to provide planning testimony indicating why the board should approve something bigger. We're back with a plan where we've done more work, the applicant has, has done research into what makes sense, he's had an architect look at the site, he's had his site engineer review it, and, and it's our opinion that the only impacted neighbor is the church, a representative of the church is here. Obviously, if we're doing something that negatively impacts them, that is something that we would need to deal with. The applicant does want to be a good neighbor, the park, we're not going to adversely impact, and if you see on the plan, there is a buffer in the back, the plan does provide for open areas, it provides for adequate access to Route eighty-eight, but we're asking for more than the, than the board saw last time, so we get to the, the parking aspect of it, which I would imagine, knowing the, the way the board reviews applications for many years, the parking, the way that breaks down is the simpahol in the basement, what's shown on the plans is seventy-three hundred and seventy square feet. When you go by the ordinance-
Yeah, what's the ordinance?
The ordinance calculation is point seven-five per hundred square feet for the first two thousand, and then one per hundred square feet for the remainder, comes to sixty-eight for the simpaholes as proposed.
Sixty-eight per?
Sixty-eight total.
Total?
Total, sixty-eight total.
So I need, I need sixty-eight, so, so let's, let's do a little bit of math, okay? Let's not get to the-
That's, that's exactly what I wanted to do, is do some math.
Oh, good, good, good.
Okay, so, so the way we came up with the building size was we looked at the net area, because we thought it's the, the net area that generates the parking.
Give me both numbers, I need to work on the gross area, because that's the ordinance, and you want the net.
Okay, well, the, so if you want the gross area first, it's fifty-two thousand and change divided by three hundred is a hundred and seventy-four parking spaces.
I need a hundred and seventy-four plus sixty-eight?
Well-
Let's, let's first see-
Worst, worst case, a hundred and seventy-four plus sixty-eight.
One seventy-four plus sixty-eight?
I'm not even going to add those numbers up, because we can't do that.
Two forty-two.
Two forty-two? Two forty-two, two forty-two is my ideal number, it should work without it, but parking variance-
That the zoning ordinance required.
Right, two forty-two.
Why do you have two thirty-one, two thirty-one?
Because I have the net.
We had calculated two hundred and thirty-one spaces.
Terry's calculated two thirty-one.
I do have two thirty-one.
I believe, based upon the information on the plans.
That's because he gave you the plans of the net, we're going on base of the ordinance with the gross?
Well, you can, you could do, we could do the simpaholes different, I didn't want to get cute with the board, because that's, you know, it's simp-
But if it's two thirty-one or two forty-two?
Yes, yes.
We have a hundred and forty.
Okay.
One forty-eight.
So how do we deal with it?
Well, the way we deal with it is, if you have the two uses at different times, they don't need the same parking spaces. When the offices close-
We're going to a hundred and seventy of us.
Well, we, we have, we have two issues to deal with. One is the net versus gross, and then is the shared parking.
Can I just ask a question, are there other buildings that you're going to build up here, do not have parking, other office buildings, do not have parking problem, based on that net versus gross, because I've seen a lot of apartment, a lot of office buildings where they, where it seems to be the option?
I didn't do a, a study of the, the other office buildings, I, you know, I know the office buildings that I've been in, you know, it's different if you have large lobby areas, you have less parking demand than you do when, when you don't have the lobby area.
So if you were to leave your net number, what would the net number be?
Well, the, the net number would be, for the office, one hundred and forty-eight parking spaces, and, and then-
And then sixty-eight?
Right. Well, then, are, if the, you're not going to have the two uses at the same time-
So everyone has a whole?
-with shared parking. Not, not everybody, just sixty-eight people, sixty-eight out of one hundred and forty-eight.
Will they draw it out on your head?
Yes.
So are these going to be garden offices only? Are all the offices that don't cause a parking?
Well, and the simpaholes don't start at five, you know, so-
Maybe you might, maybe you leave, maybe you should have brought-
Well, we, we, we could limit, we-
By the way, just as a side note, just as a side note, a lot of these parties that are full of capacity are, are parking lots are open. Go to Lake Terrace, if there's a big party, can't find a single spot, in Lake Terrace, Bayside, can't find a single spot, in any of these halls.
And those are-
Only in which we might find something.
Yeah, but those are large halls that are done for weddings, and we're looking for a different type of-
Do you increase the size of the, of the basement to accommodate bigger, you know, parties?
You want to say something?
Right, I want to go back to the simple, six thousand square feet, it's frightening, I think that one of the considerations that you're not taking here is that though the staff, kitchen staff is not going to come at five or six or seven at night, they're going to come early, kind of delivery trucks, this is going to cause up an enormous demand.
Oh, the big, the parking?
I mean, yeah. So, in all, in all seriousness, I mean, this is, whenever, whenever it's a party at the place, the amount of parking is for the staff involved, so that is going to cut into the date party, so I don't see how restricting of all, just for evening, is going to help that situation, especially if you're considering putting on third floor. I really just don't see that.
Well, the approval can condition deliveries on being after seven o'clock at night.
By the way, I'll pick up, I haven't done a little, what if someone's making a little bigger party, wants to use both of them, fourteen thousand square feet?
No, no, no. No, no, no. If I can clarify, Mr. Chairman, no, Mr. Chairman.
The simpahol are two, one is moving down.
Mr. Chairman, the simpahol is only, was only increasing by a small amount of square footage, it's the same square, the same six thousand square feet that we have.
I understand, but we're trying to figure out a way how to utilize both uses.
No, 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 I understand, you were saying it's fourteen thousand square feet of simpahol.
He said two, but each one is seven thousand?
No, 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 it's the same, it's more or less the same square footage, we're dividing it in half, two rooms.
Each one is, each one is about-
How many pounds each room?
Each, each room is three thousand and change.
Oh, 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 oh.
Yes, that's what, correct.
And, and the applicant would like to take one of the disagreements off the table, on the gross and the net. We could make the building smaller so that the parking works based on the, the gross.
I conferred, I conferred with Terry, I asked the question, if, based upon the one hundred and forty-eight parking spaces, what number does that equal for our square footage of the building? Terry indicated approximately four?
For the office.
Yes, thank you, approximately forty-four thousand square feet, and we, we would agree to that over three stories.
What was still, what we're still using, still going to be shy on parking?
On the catering facility, which, correct.
Sixty-eight spaces, we're going to be shy.
Correct, we're working.
Are you saying that the three stories would be a total of forty-four thousand?
That's, that's correct, so it would be, we'd be reducing the footprint from seventeen thousand, four hundred to fourteen thousand and, and change, I could give you the exact Fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four maximum footprint.
Okay, let's continue.
So, so now we don't have to talk about gross or net anymore.
Does somebody agree that if they do that, it's come back? I don't, I was getting it, yeah, I was getting it, yes.
I hear the question.
You jump the gun, usually when you check things around like this? We fold up, bring it back in.
No, no, that, that's the point, no, we didn't change. We, we gave you the plan that showed the new use, so this application is a combined use as well as site plan, we provided you already-
I didn't have the site plan based on what you just said, you didn't make it a smaller site plan, you just made my building smaller.
You told me revise on the forty, to the, to forty-four.
You're making the building smaller, we're making bigger lobby, what are you doing?
We're making the building small.
Okay, so now I, so, making it smaller, you get more, you get more parking?
Yes.
If you make the building smaller, you can get, and you make the footprint smaller, you'll be able to get more parking.
No, we can't get more parking.
Why?
Caff, cannot get another parking space. Hundred and forty-eight parking spaces is the max.
We can get, we can get more, we can get one more, one hundred and forty-nine.
Okay.
When the one hundred and fiftieth parking space, you go to Caffrey.
Well, but I, okay.
The parking space for Caffrey, if you put in, let's say, truck, truck parking space, space for truck, will that count?
Space, space for a truck would count as one parking space.
Chair, I agree with my colleague, Judah Rubiak, and I'm going to read him from the resolution, okay? Being further resolved, it clearly says here, any deviation from the application submitted as amended herein, or failure to comply with representations as taught in the records will result in this application being null and void. So what I'm going back here is, this application as to before is not the application as to the resolution.
That is correct.
Yes, correct, we agree.
The application tonight is not what was approved.
That is correct.
So then, as far as I'm concerned, this, we don't know, we're looking at this.
That is correct.
No, now, hold on, while you-
That is correct, we're not looking at that, so.
Totally new use application.
That is correct, so totally new use, he's using analogy the old one to the new one, but forget about the old one.
But this doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist, is that, nullifying that one, because if we turn it down on this, this one still stays alive.
Okay, well, see, that's my question, because according to this, if we're looking at this, I don't-
If you deny tonight's application, you-
All this.
Yes.
Yes, exactly.
Terry, the original, I'm just reading, it says, the proposal, so the applicant will comply with all present in the press, from June three, sixteen, proposed catering hall will be no larger than six thousand square feet, you know, these are just the compliances on what we already, we said originally, that will comply with all parking rights at the time of the site kind of Caffrey, that was the resolution, that they have to comply with this, what are we doing here?
Judah-
They're asking you for the home, they're asking you to forget about this resolution.
Is this something that has to be, was this, was this-
This is a new app-
It's a new application.
Okay, so it's a new application, is this something that needs five O's or just four?
Yes, we have a use-
Was the public notice, like the original application?
Yes, it's a new, it's a new application.
You gave me your finger, now I want to hit it, I'm going to give you your finger.
And again, just to clarify, when I started the application, I indicated, before we go too far down the site plan, doing the whole application, let's just talk about the two uses, because these are addition to what was previously granted. So in the event the board want to changes, and we already heard that they didn't like the size of the building, so we already gone and shrunk it, I was trying to get to all that, so we could go get to the site, but we're not getting there yet.
And, and I would use a different analogy, that we came in and said we needed a car, and after looking at it more intently, we, we're now saying we need an SUV, so we're back here, ask, from start, asking for, starting all over. The other, the other one is just, we only bring it up because everybody knows it was done. If we came back here with a two-story and a six thousand square foot simpahol, we wouldn't need five votes.
That's correct.
We need, we need five votes, we think there's good reasons why we should get a little bit more, not the whole hand by any means.
What are the good reasons?
The, the good reasons are, we, we've studied the site, and we've looked at- The, the good reasons are, we, we've studied the site, uh, and we've looked at the simco hall in particular, and we're, we're going for, uh, two smaller simco halls to, uh, to cater to different events.
I'll talk about the good reasons why we should go to third floor.
Oh, the, the good reasons for the third floor is, this, uh, property should never have been in an OS zone. It's a property that's adjoining a park, so there's no neighbors that are getting, uh, impacted by this. You're, you're, it's a property that's between Ocean Avenue and, uh, and the park. By going to third story, uh, we can leave with the same 148 parking spaces, when we make it smaller, there'll be more open space on the ground.
How tall is the concord?
The concord?
Concorde.
Uh, that's five stories.
That's 10 feet.
Uh, probably 65 was the, the ordinance height, so it's probably 60, close to 65 feet.
What, what happens?
What's going on in the basement?
Brian, what happens if there's an unforeseen event and there's an overflow of cars? Where are they going to go?
Um, we, uh, the, the applicant has indicated that he sees the simco hall as a problem, uh, and, and I, I think at this point that we don't have a plan. I, I, I don't expect the board would say, okay, we're going to just use the basement for storage, that, that's the applicant's proposal at this point. He sees the simco hall as a, a, a non-starter because the board feels parking is needed, and, and that's what we said in the beginning, if the board feels there's not enough parking, there's no place else to park here except on our neighbor, and, and we want to be good neighbors, so we don't want to park there. So we would eliminate the simco hall, we'd go to 14,894.
I would rather, I would rather eliminate the top dwelling, the simco hall.
The original application was, was not a two-story and a simco hall.
That's what I do.
What's wrong with it?
I don't want to hike it.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I, I thought, just giving my opinion on all my colleagues.
Why?
Mr. Gross asked before, are there any other buildings that, that we can kind of go off to see if they're worth or not? Literally back to back to this building around the corner on New Hampshire, um, there's an office building that got a parking waiver, and I don't even think it's completely full, and there's an overflow of parking on Avenue of America, which is actually causing a bunch of a lot of problems, it's blocking emergency vehicles and garbage trucks, and I believe that, I, I believe that even the committee even had to make a resolution to add parking on street, you know, street...
Well, the, the applicant has gotten smarter while he's listened, and he's no longer going to ask for a parking variance.
Right. The only thing is, is that over here, there's no Wall Street, that's my issue.
Well, and, and which is, which is, he's, he's been educated because he's going to have to rent it, so now he knows, he, he thanks you for your wisdom, and he's withdrawing the parking variance.
So, to clarify, we're back to a smaller building, three-story, we're back to a smaller than three-story, no parking variance, enough to...
Yes. A 44,684 square foot maximum building, uh, with 148 parking spaces and, and no simco hall in the basement. So, as, as the chairman indicated, the trade-off here is there's no simco hall, there's no parking issue with the simco hall.
Brian, I'm going to tell you what my personal feeling is, stay the way it was with your basement at two, at two stories.
Chairman, you have to hear from the public now.
What?
Public.
Unless they want to, unless they want to pull it, does I personally feel at this point, that they should bring back a complete new application, um, and then, and let's see what happens? Therefore, therefore, it shouldn't have to be a public.
Well, Mr. ...
Do you not accomplish the same with a larger building, you put some stories?
I think about, like, parking, but with that, to answer, to answer that, we need to go back to the board to, to see what we could do. If they can't at this time, I'd like to ask if we table this, if we can go back and take a look at, with the board's comments and see if we could tweak it.
Please do.
There's a lot of positive and negative comments here, we want to make sure they're right on the case.
By the way, by the way, I didn't see the plan, but I want to see how high the basement is going to be. If you want to eliminate the basement, what height do you have in the basement here?
What's the view?
One second. Um, what's your basement height?
Chairman.
Yes.
That's your question.
Yeah. What's your, what's your basement height? Your basement height is what? Excuse me, layout.
Building on the stack, what's that?
Chairman.
Go ahead.
I, I think I heard your, uh, chairman say withdraw, I heard Mr. Pfeiffer say table.
Yes.
Well, yeah, okay, I meant table.
Well, I hope you don't mean table, I mean, the, the joint property owner has, I guess, paid for attorney's fee here.
No.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay.
Well, it's either they, apparently they want to have, which is understandable, the applicant wants to redraw the plan, well, that's a new application.
That is correct.
All right, so it's a matter of withdrawing this application with prejudice and resubmitting a new application.
I would respectfully disagree with, with Jerry in the sense that we've heard some comments, this, this was an application, um, I have no objection that we're working, we've worked with, with the church in the past, we had, they were here at the previous application, we had, we heard their concerns, and, and again, we had no, no issues with them. To say that we're coming back with prejudice, I, again, we have an application, we heard their comments, this happens all the time, where the board comes back and, and gives pointers and says, we don't like this, we like this, so all we're asking for is to go back, we're going to have to notice again to make those changes, but at this time, you know, to say that we're, it's withdrawing, uh, I think that, that's unfair to the applicant.
Well, how is it unfair?
There's going to be additional fees that they're going to have to pay with regard to application fees, we're not, and, and right now, we're not changing the whole application completely, we want to take a look, there were a lot of comments made, there were a lot of calculations.
I don't see what you wanted to, I don't see where you know what you want to do. Is it going to be two stories or three stories?
We're going to have to talk about it, there were a lot of comments.
That's exactly why, that's exactly where the attorney's point is, right? If you're giving...
Right now, we would like it to be three stories.
What?
We would like it to be three stories, there was a question as to, you know, are you going to change it, how many square feet is going to be each story?
I didn't get an answer yet to my basement height, but, but I hear what Jerry's saying, Jerry's saying that if, if it stays two stories, that is a site that's based on the old resolution, if you're changing the three stories, it's, um, based on what we have today, so if you go into the old one, a new application, do you make it smaller, make it today, it's...
Well, well, Chairman, we're withdrawing the application. We're withdrawing the application, we're, we're reserving all our rights.
Okay.
There's no, there's, there's no...
We'll go to the basement.
It scales about 10 feet.
10 feet?
All right, uh, advocates, it's understood that the applicant's withdrawing this application with prejudice, you can't come back to this application.
You see, why is it withdrawing with, we're going to be changing, we're going to be changing something about the application.
Well, then, you're going to bring it different.
I, I, I'm drawing it, we're not withdrawing with prejudice.
Well, then we'll vote it down, you can't bring this application back.
I understand, it's going to be a different application than what you see.
Well, then, this application is...
This exact application, no problem, we have no problem, we will withdraw it with prejudice, this exact application, but our previous application stays, and any modification to this plan is acceptable.
Understood.
Okay, can I have a motion for withdrawing?
I don't think you need it.
So we're try...
Well, I think you ought to accept the withdrawal, just to be sure.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept, um, um, the motion? What, um, the, the withdrawal, what? The motion from, from Mr. Gross, second from, give me one second please, second from Judah, what do you want to say before we get the motion?
I speak down to the attorney.
Please step forward to the podium before we go for the vote.
I'm not sure if we have to swear.
No, you're attorney.
Okay, I'm an attorney, okay. Jesus A. Colazo, I'm the attorney just for the parish. Jesus, J.E.S.U.S., middle national, A, Colazo, C.O.L.L.A.Z.O. And I, I apologize for dressing this way, I would call my father to come, show up because he can't come down, but basically his only concern was the parking, because the church has a lo, a large congregation that has certain events, so I'm glad that you had that concern as we did. We're not concerned about the height of the building, I mean, it is what it is, but we're always concerned about the parking issues. And the other thing, if, the church does not own the property, the diocese of Trenton does, so I'm not sure whether to protect themselves, if you contact the diocese of Trenton to make sure, because we don't own the property per se, the parish, so any property changes that can affect the diocese's property, I think to be safe, as an attorney, I would contact the diocese themselves as well, I mean, contact the parish, you know.
Who's listed the owner on the record?
Did you notice where it was on the record?
No, I think it's the property, but I'm, but, I'm told to him that the diocese owns the property to protect yourself, you may have to contact them.
Or would the notice go to?
It goes to the church, the parish, it went to the parish church, but I mean...
No, 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 the property owns the diocese of Trenton.
Oh, yeah, I think it is, but it, I mean, they're...
The, the address on, for the, for the, on file with the township is Church of St. Anthony Claire, 780 Ocean Avenue, that's where all, all of them.
Okay, that's fine.
But he tells me that belongs to the diocese of Trenton, so as a result, to protect yourself, you know, you may have to contact them as well, I don't know.
Just for the record, to be clear, what's the stack?
Give me the mic.
The law requires me to request a list, certify this from the township, the township address on record is seven, the address that is read, that is what we're required to do.
Exactly right.
And we have done.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else I want to say?
No, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I have a motion, I'm ready for a vote.
I'll take it, yes.
Motion wants to accept or withdraw the application, that was the motion.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
The advocates?
Yes.
Rubiak?
Yes.
The group?
Yes.
The advocate?
Yes. We'll see you back, thank you. Bye. Okay, go ahead. For the record, Judah Rubiak left for the evening and the rest of the night session. Yes, the last one. Moving forward.
34.
Five, uh, six, six.
4031.
Six, K.G. West, uh, 4031, Gerald Bowden, 45 cents of vote.
About 76, about 17, on 12, all, it's what the superintendent has to set back, 14.60 feet and 10.70 feet, 10.50 wide, so that the plan is controlled, the avenue is 200.
Getting anyone?
So you're going to want to draw the space, you're going to want to use the next thing, you want to set that, 10.10 wide, and actually, so I got set that, you're going to be sold, but...
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Flannery, you spread it, tell it to the, it's held to God.
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Uh, the applicant is here, he's taken some pictures, uh, I, I've labeled, uh, the tax map is A1, the plan submitted is A2, we could label this picture as A3, it's a picture of the, uh, subject property, I would expect most of the board members are familiar with, uh, what it looks like, uh, so, uh, as indicated, uh, the applicant, uh, wants to, uh, knock down the old house that's in need of redevelopment, uh, and construct a new house that, uh, meets his needs. Looking at the RVV report, uh, the property is in the R12 zone, it's an existing lot of 7,500 square feet, uh, the existing side yard setback to the, uh, to the one side is 4.3, the applicant is proposing to keep that at 4.3, the other side, uh, he would do a 10.7, it leaves him a 35-foot wide house, which is a, a nice home for, uh, his family. Um, the development i- in that area is, is consistent with this, there are other houses around, it's, I, I, I didn't have enough blue, uh, ink in my pen to ink all the 50-foot wide ones, but it, it's a, a neighborhood that was created by an older subdivision, and it's a mix of wider houses and smaller houses, the house that's proposed, uh, will be a, a, a nice house, uh, to suit his family. If you look at the, uh, master plan of 2007, on page 56, it says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles, it's my testimony that that's what this is, the, uh, under the municipal land use law, NJAC 44 and 55D2, a purpose of the act encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety morals, and general welfare, uh, E is promote the establishment of appropriate population densities, he's entitled to one house here, he could build a 25-foot wide house by right, he, he would submit the plans to Francine tomorrow, it, it wouldn't suit his family, it wouldn't fit in well in the neighborhood, uh, so we're, we're asking for minimal bulk, bulk relief, it's a C2 variance, we need to show that the benefits outweigh the detriments, uh...
So it's 725, make it a 30.
No, we are currently 29.
Yeah, the, the existing house is, is 29, so...
29 feet wide?
29 feet wide.
I agree.
Excuse me?
How many square feet is the current house?
Well, the current house is, is smaller in square feet, but we're...
Well, how many square feet is? Maybe 29, but how deep?
It's 1,700 square feet. The, the building coverage that's, uh, allowed is 30%, we're only at 28%, so we're not exceeding the building coverage. The variances that, that are listed in Terry's report is the lot area, 7,500, it's an existing condition, the lot width 50, it's an existing condition, the setbacks for the garage, uh, which are an existing condition, so, you know, as far as an impact on the neighbors, there, there's very little impact on the neighbors, other than an old house that's in need of redevelopment is going to be replaced with a newer house and, and a nice family living.
Right, so this proposal is 1,750 a floor. So about 50, about 35?
Yes.
Okay, how much is the floor?
How, how did the house exist?
The house that exists is a 1,700 square foot total.
Mayor, what was it? Toyot?
Yeah.
1750.
1750 per floor?
No.
Yes.
Oh, the, the, the existing, yes.
The proposed house?
Proposed, 17...
1750 per floor, proposed, right.
Versus 1,700 as a whole.
Yeah, but it's 28% lot cover.
So maybe 4...
Yeah, okay, but, but we got, we got one and a half, 1.3 feet from the window well to the property line.
Well, the existing situation...
What's the difference? There's something new coming up, we got to move existing.
How can we improve a house which is one and a half foot?
Why don't we take the house, make it a drop smaller, center it, and everything
My address is thirty Sunset Road.
Is it not adjacent on either side?
I'm not adjacent on either side, I'm across the street and a couple of houses down. Um, I just want, I wanna give the board just a little bit of an overview of the neighborhood, it's a very quiet neighborhood, um, although we're, we're not, it's a very, very close knit neighborhood with the families, we all get along, although we don't spend much time together, but we all get along with each other.
They get along.
Perhaps, perhaps. Um, but it is, it is a neighborhood of growing families, and, uh, most of the houses on the block, as we heard from Mr. Flannery, um, do have a hundred foot, uh, frontage, including mine. Um, and there's only just a few, two on his side, perhaps one or two on my side, but there's only very few, it was an old subdivision, all of them were fifty, fifty wide, and then all of them were doubled up, sides for a couple. Um, and, and most of the houses on the, on the, on the, on the, on the block are, um, older houses, and, uh, those who, who were able to afford it, um, those families who had growing families, either renovated their houses, or tore them down and rebuilt them. Um, there are a few of the older houses left, including his, of which I would say his is probably even one of the worst conditions of, of the entire neighborhood. Um, it, it, those who couldn't afford, or, or simply didn't feel they wanted to go through the aggravation of re-renovating or rebuilding, or they had some sort of a trouble with the lot, just simply moved out. Um, the, I, I, I'm not gonna get into the specifics really too much of, of the lot, um, because that's the job, I guess, of the applicant and the, the attorney and the board to discuss that. It, I, I think that the, the harping on the window wells and how far the existing four point three, uh, setback was on that side, his neighbor on the other, that side doesn't mind, matter of fact, he's the only one, one of the only ones left on the block with exactly the same situation. You're probably, if he gets together the money, see him here next year, asking for the same thing. Um, the, um, one thing which I think that the, the applicant did fail to mention though, is that on the side which, which, um, which the setback is become, is becoming small, on the side which is.
Steep.
On the side which the setback is becoming smaller, um, there is a steep embank, there is a steep in- embankment, which, um, which, which makes it that it really doesn't affect the neighbor that much. Um, but, but he's a homeowner here, not a developer, and, and really frankly, I, I understand what the board said, that, that they don't really care much about the money, and it's understandable, but, um, I, I, I know him, and I know his situation. If this doesn't get approved, he's not gonna go through it again, and he's gonna move out. And then one of, one of two things, and possibly the two in succession will happen. Either we're gonna end up with, with, it's, it's an old house, it's real decrepit, it's starting to fall apart, we're gonna end up with some real, real lower income renters, I don't want to over generalize here, but, but we all know who's going to end up in there, and, and that's not good for the neighborhood, he is good for the neighborhood along with his family. Or perhaps you're gonna have a developer who's gonna come in here, no trouble, get the variance without any trouble, and, 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 and move, and, and move on, and perhaps the two will happen in succession. I, I, it, my own neighbor has, it's not the ones who have the small setbacks, or the old houses, my own neighbor has, has a, a new renovated and rebuilt house with a very small setback.
Thirty seconds.
With a very small setback. Um, and, and I just think that it's the best for the neighborhood, that he should be allowed to do it, because, because if he's not allowed to do it, he, after all the possibilities, he's going to end up out, and I don't want the alternative.
Next, anyone else wanna be heard? You step up?
Sir, would you affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes, I affirm.
Would you give us your full name and spell your name?
Naftali Gurwitz.
I'm sorry?
Naftali Gurwitz.
Could you spell your last name?
G U R W I T Z.
What is your address?
Four nineteen Central. There's one backyard in between our backyards, I'm on Central, he's on Sunset. Just want to say, as a son from the neighborhoods for a couple of years already, not just I wanted to stay here, I think it would be good for the neighborhood to have some nicer looking houses to, to put a mildly, and him, definitely the neighborhood would be a big asset, and I think the neighborhood would be very excited to have this project go through. Thank you.
Anyone else, you step up?
Should you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I affirm.
That'll put up your hand, do you swear or, no, the other, the other hand, do you swear or affirm?
Affirm.
Give us your full name and spell your name.
Uh, first name Mordechai, M O R D E C H A I, middle name David, D A V I D, last name Siegfried, S as in Sam, I E G F as in Frank, R I U D.
I miss the last one.
What?
Spell the last name a little slower, please.
Siegfried, S I E G F R I E D.
Thank you.
What is your address?
Four zero five Central Avenue.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, I think the neighbors have spoken quite well, I just wanted to add one extra thing, uh, to give some understanding of how old these houses are. I currently live in a house, uh, that was built in nineteen twenty-nine. My neighbor recently mentioned to us that when our house was built, this was what she got from, the person she bought the house from. In order to build our house, to remove the dirt, they used to put it in the back of a wagon, and had the donkeys pull the dirt out, in order to make room for my house. Uh, these houses, I don't know if they had in mind to be built for that way, but they definitely do not have the room and the space that is necessary for people with growing families in our community to live inside. It could very well be that there are certain variances, but that are necessary, the few feet here or there, but the bottom line remains that we don't wish to see people being, not forced out of their houses per se, but forced to move, uh, to be able to have the living space that's necessary to raise a growing family. Um, we've all gotten along very well, maybe because we don't have it, but it's a very, very quiet neighborhood, South Lake, it's very quiet, it's very nice, but the houses are just too small. And if we can get the variances that we need to be able to build and make it look normal, and to be able to raise our families, I think we would all be appreciative, not only him, but I'm sure there's other cases that will come forward as well in this area. Uh, thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else? Seeing none, of course, to the public.
I just wanna say, the secretary, we, we don't want him not to build his house, but I just wanna, I wanna, I just wanna set the record straight, we want everyone to build a house, we want everyone to look comfortable. We just have to understand that we, there are some laws that we are bound by that you have to fit the house into, just because he started, just, just went ahead and built his house, and he decided this is what he decided to do, doesn't mean that we have to agree with him, um, undoing what he wants, and we want him to stay in the neighborhood, so long he can fit within the parameters of the code of an R twelve zone. This is an R twelve zone, seventy-five hundred script, but we have to let him build a house, granted, I can't tell him to build a house based on R twelve, but I can tell him to build a house somewhat close to it. When you have one, one and a half feet away from the window well, to the property line, four and a half feet from the house to the property line, that is not within reason for us to approve an application. So, we're trying to, to help to move it, make the house a little smaller, well, we've done a lot of variances in our R twelve with the houses were, like the lots were seventy-one hundred, where everyone knew they came in, ten and ten, and the house was thirty, thirty-one, thirty-one feet, thirty feet, I don't know if we have the idea that thirty-five feet will come and tell us, I'm sorry, I lost my money, I need to do it, no.
Are they?
Speak to Fran, whoever.
If you tell me, for Brian's points, just back to what you're saying, he doesn't have to build a small house, he can go, build a longer, deeper, you'd be, you'd be, you'd be.
Yeah.
You have, you have the room.
We're doing that.
But if it's gonna be thirty-five, fifty-seven, eighty, seventeen hundred.
And, and the applicant has heard what you said, and he would respectfully ask for eight and a half foot, we, originally it would be seven and a half, if he makes it thirty-three, it's only three feet bigger than what, what he could get going in to see, uh, Fran, the three foot, I don't think anybody's gonna mind, and you heard the neighbor said they'd like to have him stay here.
Again, I don't wanna move him out of the neighborhood, I think he can stay at thirty or something, you know, because, because it goes longer.
It becomes a challenge.
You know, you know, but, you know, we've seen thirty foot wide houses in town, you know, I remember when I joined this board, twenty-two foot house was a nice sized house, then it went to twenty, twenty-four feet.
Well, they kept making the furniture.
Because you have to get the furniture in, remember that complaint, you have to get the furniture in. Then we decided we're gonna go to twenty-six feet and get Ikea furniture, now we're up to thirty-five feet, because we can't go any smaller than that.
And, and he's gonna get his furniture somewhere other than Ikea.
Including mine, and there's only just a few, two on his side, perhaps one or two on my side, but there's only very few. It was an old subdivision. All of them were fifty wide, and then all of them were doubled up, sides for a couple. And most of the houses on the block are older houses, and those who were able to afford it, those families who had growing families either renovated their houses or tore them down and rebuilt them. There are a few of the older houses left, including his, of which I would say his is probably even one of the worst condition of the entire neighborhood. Those who couldn't afford or simply didn't feel they wanted to go through the aggravation of renovating or rebuilding, or they had some sort of a trouble with the lot, just simply moved out. I'm not going to get into the specifics really too much of the lot, because that's the job, I guess, of the applicant and the attorney and the board to discuss that. I think that the harping on the window wells and how far the existing 4.3 setback was on that side, his neighbor on that side doesn't mind. Matter of fact, he's the only one, one of the only ones left on the block with exactly the same situation. You're probably, if he gets together the money, see him here next year asking for the same thing. The, one thing which I think that the applicant did fail to mention, though, is that on the side which the setback is becoming, is becoming small, on the side which, on the side which the setback is becoming smaller, there is a steep embankment, which makes it that it really doesn't affect the neighbor that much. But he's a homeowner here, not a developer, and really frankly, I understand what the board said, that they don't really care much about the money, and it's understandable. But I know him, and I know his situation. If this doesn't get approved, he's not going to go through it again, and he's going to move out. And then one of two things, and possibly the two in succession will happen. Either we're going to end up with, it's an old house, it's real decrepit, it's starting to fall apart, we're going to end up with some real, real low-income renters. I don't want to overgeneralize here, but we all know who's going to end up in there, and that's not good for the neighborhood. He is good for the neighborhood along with his family. Or perhaps you're going to have a developer who's going to come in here, no trouble, get the variance without any trouble, and move on, and perhaps the two will happen in succession. My own neighbor has, it's not the ones who have the small setbacks, or the old houses, my own neighbor has a new renovated and rebuilt house with a very small setback.
Thirty seconds.
With a very small setback. And I just think that it's the best for the neighborhood, that he should be allowed to do it, because if he's not allowed to do it, after all the possibilities, he's going to end up out, and I don't want the alternative.
Next. Anyone else want to be heard? Can you step up?
Sir, do you affirm the tell the whole truth?
Yes, I affirm.
Would you give us your full name, spell your name.
Naftali Gurwitz.
I'm sorry?
Naftali Gurwitz.
Could you spell your last name?
G-U-R-W-I-T-Z.
What's your address?
419 Central. There's one backyard in between our backyards. I'm on Central, he's on Sunset. Just want to say, as someone from the neighborhood for a couple of years already, not just I wanted to stay here, I think it would be good for the neighborhood to have some nicer-looking houses to put a mildly, and him definitely in the neighborhood would be a big asset, and I think the neighborhood would be very excited to have this project go through.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can you step up?
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I affirm.
That'll put up your hand. Do you swear or, no, the other, the other hand. Do you swear or affirm?
Affirm.
If your full name is, spell your name.
First name Mordechai, M-O-R-D-E-C-H-A-I. Middle name David, D-A-V-I-D. Last name Siegfried, S is in Sam, I-E-G-F is in Frank, R-I-E-D.
I missed the last one. Spell the last name a little slower, please.
Siegfried, S-I-E-G-F-R-I-E-D.
Thank you.
What is your address?
405 Central Avenue.
Go ahead.
Yes, I think the neighbors have spoken quite well. I just wanted to add one extra thing to give some understanding of how old these houses are. I currently live in a house that was built in 1929. My neighbor recently mentioned to us that when our house was built, this was what she got from, the person she bought the house from. In order to build our house, to remove the dirt, they used to put it in the back of a wagon and have the donkeys pull the dirt out in order to make room for my house. These houses, I don't know if they had in mind to be built for that way, but they definitely do not have the room and the space that is necessary for people with growing families in our community to live inside. It could very well be that there are certain variances that are necessary, the few feet here or there. But the bottom line remains that we don't wish to see people being not forced out of their houses, per se, but forced to move to be able to have the living space that's necessary to raise a growing family. We've all gotten along very well, maybe because we don't have it, but it's a very, very quiet neighborhood. South Lake, it's very quiet, it's very nice, but the houses are just too small. And if we can get the variances that we need to be able to build and make it look normal, and to be able to raise our families, I think we would all be appreciative, not only him, but I'm sure there's other cases that will come forward as well in this area. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else? Seeing none, propose to the public.
I just want to say, Secretary, we don't want him not to build his house. But I just want to, I just want to send the record straight. We want everyone to build a house, we want everyone to look comfortably. We just have to understand that we, there are some laws that we are bound by that you have to fit the house into. Just because he started, just went ahead and built his house, and he decided this is what he decided to do, doesn't mean that we have to agree with him, undoing what he wants. If we want him to stay in the neighborhood so long he can fit within the parameters of the code of an R-12 zone. This is an R-12 zone, 7500 script, where we have to plan to build a house. Granted, I can't tell him to build a house based on R-12, but I can tell him to build a house somewhat close to it. When you have one and a half feet away from the window wall to the property line, four and a half feet from the house to the property line, that is not within reason for us to approve an application. So, we're trying to, to move it, make the house a little smaller. We've done a lot of variances in our R-12 with the houses floor, like the lots were 7500, where everyone knew they came in, ten on ten, and the house was thirty, thirty-one, thirty-one feet, thirty feet. I don't know if we have the idea that thirty-five feet, they'll come and then tell us, "I'm sorry, I lost my money, I need to do it." No.
I do.
Speak to Brian, whoever.
If you tell me, Paul Brian responds, just back to what you're saying, he doesn't have to build a small house, he can go and build a longer, deeper, you'd be, you'd be doing it.
Yeah.
You have to, you have to room.
We're doing that.
But it could be thirty-five.
It's redoing, it's redoing.
Fifty-seven.
It's redoing.
Seventeen hundred.
And the applicant has heard what you said, and he would respectfully ask for eight and a half foot. Originally, it would be seven and a half. If he makes it thirty-three, it's only three feet bigger than what he could get going in to see Fran. The three foot, I don't think anybody's going to mind, and you heard the neighbor said they'd like to have him stay here.
Again, I don't want to move here in the neighborhood. I think he can stay at thirty or something, you know, because it goes longer. You know, we've seen thirty-foot wide houses in town. You know, I remember when I joined this board, twenty-two-foot house was a nice-sized house, then it went to twenty-four feet.
Well, they kept making the furniture.
Because you have to get the furniture in, remember that complaint, you have to get the furniture in. Then we decided we're going to go to twenty-six feet and get IKEA furniture. Now we're up to thirty-five feet, because we can't go any smaller than that.
And he's going to get his furniture somewhere other than IKEA.
Right.
But he's, 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 he's asking for thirty-six extra inches. And it's, you know, a homeowner that lives there.
Again, I want him to stay here. We never don't want him to stay here. I just don't want an extra neighbor who doesn't have this predicament like he's in, tell me, "Oh, I built the plans, I want to do it, give it to me also." You don't, you don't get, Brian, we're going to have a lot of problems. We have to keep it in line, that everyone knows and attend, who's going to go.
Well, but the municipal land use law says you present a case, do the benefits outweigh the detriments. The benefits to him and to the neighborhood have been presented by the applicants. The detriments are, and I understand, you don't want to set a precedent.
Brian, you haven't explained why it's more beneficial for you have thirty-five or thirty. You're spending like a new house over the covered house, yes, but by thirty over thirty-five over thirty, I don't know.
Well, the thirty-foot wide houses are narrower, and the rooms don't lay out as well. In this particular applicant's case, it's because he's expended a lot of money on the plans and the house that fits his family, and he has a fifty-foot wide lot.
He's going to get twenty feet longer.
To redo the whole plan.
And he has to redo the whole plan, and the plan isn't.
So that's what, it's not about, it's not about the space in the house.
Well, it's also the rest of his life that his family is there with him. He's in a house that's narrower and not the way he wanted it to be. If the board were to agree to the compromise of thirty-three feet, his family isn't going to miss the extra two feet, and I don't think anybody driving by is going to miss the extra foot.
Brian, he's going from seventeen hundred feet to thirty-five hundred feet.
Well, the only thing we're talking about at this point is the width, because that's the problem that he has, is the width that he's entitled to by going to Fran is thirty.
It's.
No, the width he's entitled to is thirty. Okay. The width that he's asked, he asked for was thirty-five. Now he's saying that he'll just make all the rooms a little bit smaller, and he'll make it thirty-three.
But he's still got to redo the drawings and waste the fifty thousand bucks.
I spoke, I spoke with the architect about it already before I came to the board. To make it from thirty-five to thirty-three will not take a huge sum of money. It cost me less than it cost me to bring Brian here.
I didn't know Brian was like that. I think if now Brian, if you made that part, it would change.
And worth every penny.
It was worth every penny.
The side entrance, it seems like on one point it does go downstairs, and it says the word down on one, on first floor, then it can't come in.
No, there's a pedestal on the, but I'll close that door if that's what you want, gladly. I made that door, so that way the wife can drive up and do the groceries. If the board wants the door closed, with pleasure. That's not even a...
Another issue which we're having is that the line of the houses are, there are a chance that we're going to get people, the people already are going to do this. So, you know, it doesn't seem like it from your plans, doesn't seem like it from your plans, but it is an issue that we're dealing with.
So how could I alleviate that issue for the board?
They can tell me.
So I'm asking for thirty-three, because thirty-three allows me to do, to build versus not build. That's why I'm asking.
What? Brian, you heard what I have to say. What do you want to do?
Beautiful.
There you go. Whatever you guys want to do.
Can I, can I ask the board at least to vote on the thirty-three, at least I can have the opportunity to do the project? Otherwise, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I just don't have the ability to go from thirty, from thirty, take down from thirty-five to thirty-three, as I said earlier, is a very, is something that I can, that I can have done. To go down to thirty, I have to redo the whole plans, and that's something that's, it's not, the next step, I'm going to have to move on. It's not, I'm not trying to threaten.
Thirty-three and seventy to that.
Yes.
Pleasure.
So, I have motion.
Okay, so I have motion from Wally, across to thirty-three and the seven, and the seven, and center of the house, which is eight and a half feet and inside.
Yes.
Okay. Seven, one second before we did, eight, eight and a half feet. Brian, when you come back to the application, right, eight and a half feet and inside.
Do we have a second?
Oh, I have a second.
She'll pick up, she'll pick up more dirt.
From Mr. Al House, Madam Secretary, Norrie and Al.
Mr. Gelli.
Come on, next English fellow.
Ralph. It's kind of, it's kind of you.
I will promise the board not to ask for...
Okay, I can put it in the resolution.
I will tell any applicant that's even contemplating it now that the board doesn't approve that.
Okay, yes. Yes.
Al, yes.
Yes.
So, would you ask, here, in the post?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
How would you?
Whatever you want. Yes, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please make sure we're not taken.
Say that again?
Mr. Gilbert, you need to place a pardon, and I wanted to guess that.
That, one thing, I didn't come for, I didn't come for these.
If he does that, we kick him out. But yeah, the whole, it's not, yes, yes. And why she, the whole, we did.
Okay, next, next.
Is Obie Gonzalez stepping down by the next application? Lives next to him?
Hill number 4029, okay, Malo Zatoro. Thank you. Malo Zatoro. I have a very good question.
We have a half hour. Do you want to go forward?
Do you have a round?
And there's six of us. Do you want to, do you want to go forward?
Sixty-five.
What is, what question was it?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
It's a half, you have a half hour for this application.
We have, we don't have any schedule on the twenty-fourth.
Where is it? Oh, you, where are you? You want to do, you want to do it now, you want to start it now, right?
Yeah.
Want to do now. It's nine days and two weeks, so it's for first.
Okay.
What?
We're not going to vote on it tonight. We're only going to get through to eleven o'clock and then close out.
Okay, the faster we get started, the more we're here, so let's, we have to eleven o'clock.
I told my wife I'm coming at twelve o'clock.
You understand this?
Your wife was here. She was enjoying herself. I was sitting with her.
Let me ask you.
You wanted to make sure that I'm here, that it's skip on.
And next time, the people are going to vote on it? The, the, the all going to vote on?
Thirty-two, forty-eight, by eleven fifty-nine, one oh four, twenty-nine thirty, gay sale from Arson, you know, constructed both the two place, house for you, for one single family. Terry vote. This application is being bifurcated, we see the use variance approval under best motion number thirty-nine hundred. The applicant received the use variance, we leave to construct a major subdivision on four point forty-nine acre property. The applicant petitioned for the board on November fourteenth, twenty sixteen, to propose five duplexes and two triplexes. The applicant was denied. Application was denied. Current application is less intense than the initial application regarding the number of proposed families.
Please hear, until you start with those. Jerry, I live in this neighborhood.
Live within two hundred feet?
I live further than two hundred feet, but I do live in this neighborhood. Okay, so.
If you live within two hundred feet, you should notify?
Will you notify?
I received a...
You got a letter?
No.
Brad, I think we went through this at the last, I think we went through this at the last one.
Let's make it fair. If you're not within two hundred feet, then you can vote on.
I'm not within two hundred.
Okay.
What do we do?
Okay.
Can I start?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Good evening. Miriam Moynstein, on behalf of the applicant, congregation Malo Zatoro Inc. "What are we doing?" asks Mr. Gelli. I'll make it pretty simple. Actually, this application received use variance approval back in 2015 for, well, at that point in time, we came before the board with an application for duplexes and triplexes. I'm sure you recall well. The board approved the use variance. The resolution is rather vague as to whether it was only duplexes that were approved, or duplexes and triplexes that were approved. But the use variance was approved with the board not making any determination as to the number of units, and the applicant had to come back for site plan approval. In the fall of last year, the applicant came back for site plan approval. That application, as Fran actually just said, I think was for five duplexes and three triplexes, or two triplexes, and the board denied it. At the time that the board denied it, the board basically gave us guidance. That guidance was, "This is too many units. So while we approved the use, it's too many units." So, the applicant has listened to the board and says, "You're right, it was too many units. So now we're back, and we are asking for site plan approval only for a total of twelve duplex units."
I just want to interrupt you for a second. We denied that at last of site plan. That means that we denied the site plan, which did not use, use variance.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's a very, very good point. You denied the site plan, we did not use, lose the use variance. So, what I was going to tell you tonight is that this application, this, this application requires an affirmative vote of four votes, because it is for site plan only. The use was granted, and all that you're voting on is on the site plan and on the unit count, which we have shrunken significantly. And I'll also remind you that when this was first heard, you had given the applicant guidance that duplexes on lots of ten thousand square feet or greater would be palatable to the board. The applicant on this pass really is, has complied with that. I'll just remind you one more time where this site is, and the reason you granted this use variance is because this particular site is an extension of Golders Green Road. That is the road that leads to the Stanford Hill Townhouse Development. So, adjacent to this on one side, our townhouses, and again, this is virtually going to be an extension. It's almost going to feel like it's part of that development of townhouses. On the other side of this development, our apartments. It's the Andrews Corner Apartment Complex. That is the reason that you granted duplexes in an R-20 zone. And again, what we're here seeking tonight is site plan approval just really for the unit count and the design on this project. One more thing you had asked us for, at the last meeting, you were very upset that we didn't have a traffic study. We in fact have a traffic study. We also have our traffic engineer here tonight to testify. At this point, if I could ask that Graham McFarland's one?
I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
I'm looking for that answer while we're talking. And it seemed like, well, we gave you the use variance of that. Did we say?
I have the resolution if you want.
Yes. Did we say how big each block has to be?
Hold on.
And use.
Which one was it? Thirty-nine hundred six or thirty-nine hundred?
Thirty-nine hundred.
By the minute, it's at ten thousand.
So, it says then, that is the denial.
Yeah.
The resolution of approval states in part that the duplex layout lots would comply with the UDO duplex standard except for lot area and maximum building cover. So I don't think there was a, it was not a minimum square footage for the lots.
It does say in that sentence, Jerry, "The duplex layout lots would comply with UDO duplex standard except for lot area. Seven thousand six hundred thirty-eight square feet proposed, ten thousand square feet required." So, that ten thousand square feet required is what we are working off of.
Got it. So that means we have to stick with the ten thousand square feet.
You don't have to.
We don't have to, but that's more or less.
That's a start.
That's a start. Nothing smaller than that.
And nothing smaller than thirty percent cover.
Oh, fantastic.
We swear in, Graham?
Yes, ahead.
Sir, would you, but do you swear or affirm the whole truth?
I do. Graham McFarland, professional engineer, professional planner, certified municipal engineer. Yes, as indicated by Miriam, the application does have a little bit of a history, which I think the board is now familiar with. The use variance is, you know, sort of still in effect. We're here tonight just for the site plan or subdivision approval. The application as proposed shows twelve duplex units being constructed along an extension of Golders Green Road, which is a dedicated public right of ways. That would be a public street with a, with a new cul-de-sac. A stormwater management basin is also provided onsite in accordance with ours, our sites requirements.
Six duplex units, twelve houses.
Twelve houses, yes. Six duplex, six duplexes, twelve units.
Six buildings, six buildings.
Twelve doors.
Twelve doors.
Six buildings.
Six buildings, twelve units, twelve units are proposed, as shown on the plans that have been submitted to the board. We're not requesting any bulk relief for any of these lots. They all conform to a minimum lot area of ten thousand square feet per duplex, and they all comply with the bulk standards attached with the duplex standards in the UDO for side yards, front yards, rear, rear yards setback.
What zone would they comply?
Well, they would comply with the, the zone sta, the bulk standards for duplexes, which are not permitted in the, in the zone, but we've taken that standard, which generally require ten thousand square foot lot area per duplex, as well as the other standards for lot widths, setback, and they're all shown on the overall development plan, which I'm referring to at twelve more.
And just, Mr. Dass, just to clarify, since duplexes are not permitted in the R-20 zone, there are no standards for duplexes in the R-20 zone. So obviously, we're working with the standards that are typically used for duplexes in those zones where duplexes are not permitted.
Correct. And we have, we have received the review letter from Terry, and we have, we have gone through that. I think there are just a couple of points that we would, we would like to discuss. One relates to the single-family house on, that's located on Salem, as you look to the, to the right side of the, of the sheet. There's an existing single-family house, which is also part of this application. That lot will be subdivided, that lot will be fully conforming to the R-20 requirements. So again, that's a single-family house that parts on, that parts on Salem.
No, you took out the triplex.
Yes.
Or the three single-family.
Correct. There are, there are no triplexes proposed. There are only duplexes proposed as new construction, and then the one single-family house with the frontage on Salem. For that, for that lot on Salem, we're requesting a waiver from curb and sidewalk, since there were no other curb and sidewalk in that area, but certainly that is to, to the board.
Where is that one?
That's for the existing house.
Can you point it out on the plan?
That's for the existing house on Salem.
Yeah, so what does that do with us?
It's part of the application.
Yeah, but it's existing house, that's the way it is.
Well, that's our, that's our opinion as well, but for the record, we are requesting a waiver of curb and sidewalk on Salem.
You're not building anything, you're leaving it as is?
Correct.
From Salem, right?
Correct.
And it's fully conforming. A twenty thousand square foot lot meets all the setbacks.
Were you not doing anything to that house?
No.
I don't know.
Anyway, for the record, we're requesting waiver of curb and sidewalk. It is required by ordinance and pointed out in Terry's.
A waiver of law?
Curb and sidewalk along Salem Street.
Along Salem?
Correct. Since it is an existing house.
Hold on, hold on. I want to, before we do this, I want to confirm with you, Terry, but should they build something there? Oh, that's, that waiver goes away. That's correct.
If you did the construction?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, you still have to act upon the waivers, even though the representation is that the construction is going to stay the same.
Why do you bring up that?
Why are we, right. Why, and why, that's going to stay the same. Why do you, we have to give them a waiver?
I'm sorry.
Because, because the ordinance does not differentiate between whether you're developing or not. It's part of this project. They're seeking the waiver as part of this project.
Correct.
The justification for the waiver that they're making is that they are not proposing a new home, and that if someone takes that property at future date, independent of this application, and does something new, then they would do the curb and sidewalk. I believe that's.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect.
Such a property, you need to put curb and sidewalks in?
That's correct.
But they are, because this is all a lot.
It's an ordinance requirement for, for the development. You have the latitude to consider waste of lives.
This is one.
This is such a case.
So this whole area is in discussion. So then we need a curb and sidewalk, but you're not touching it, and it is for waiver, it belongs. But if they would throw this down, it's a black house.
Correct.
Right. But if they throw this down, or they have an addition of this house, then they wouldn't require.
Does a single-family house have a separate basement?
Is there a basement on that house?
Eric, do you know if that house has a basement? I don't believe that house has a basement right now.
I think it's a, it's a bi-level. It says it's a bi-level.
The applicant is indicating that he, that he thinks it's a bi-level, in which case there'd be no basement. It's bi-level? Oh, we would know. Okay, so there's no basement.
It is two hundred.
Okay.
Most, a lot of the other comments are factual. One other question relates to whether there is or is not an HOA. There is no HOA proposed with this application, since he wrote it's, it's a public street. The stormwater management basin is collecting lot off from that street, so that would be proposed to be dedicated to the township, which is the standard protocol.
You're saying it's, there's an HOA, but, but it's going into a town, a townhouse development?
Well, there is no HOA.
So they have a Title 39 on that, on that street?
It's a public street.
The one in the townhouse?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. It's a public road.
The existing street, streets within Stanford Hill are also public rights of way.
Stanford Hill has a, an HOA, but...
But that's what I'm saying, right?
Yes, but they have...
I thought it was going to be a contract.
Yes, but they went to, they went to rabbinical court, and that, that got resolved. I don't think there's anybody here from that development. I'm sure they'd be here if they had an issue.
I mean, it's funny, I used to...
Actually, there is, there is one, there is actually one neighbor here who we're going to address momentarily. I'm sorry. She's not here on the issue of the shoe, but we are going to, I'd like to address her issue whilst she's here.
My concern is that...
Yes, in the original application, Mr. Ingber, your, your memory's good. The original application, the neighbors from Stanford Meadowsville came out, then they went to rabbinical court, they resolved all their issues, and the next step is...
Like, I mean, I've heard from the...
That they're against it? Are they here?
Expertise.
Yeah, that's, that's hearsay.
You have to put it on record now.
The original application, the neighbors from Stamford Meadowsville came out, then they went to rabbinical court, they resolved all their issues, and on the next application.
Like, I mean, I've heard from the.
Correct. That they're against it? Are they here?
Expletive.
Yeah, that's, that's hearsay.
You have to put it on record now.
Right?
Should we address the neighbor?
No, let me, let me finish first.
I'm just concerned, you said that the township side has HOA?
The town, the road is owned by the township. It's a public, Golders Green Road is a public right of way. That development happens to have a homeowners association, because there are other common elements. There's open space in that development, and there's a clubhouse, and whatever. So, but that is nothing to, that HOA has nothing to do with this development. This, that road is a public right of way, there are no common elements as part of this.
The road.
No, that is correct. It's a township public right of way. Okay. Graham?
Terry asks, asks about attics, and attics are proposed for storage, there are no bedrooms in the attic. That, that shows on the architectural plans. There was, there was some discussion with the previous application about the accuracy or completeness of the architectural plans, but we have submitted new architectural plans for this, for this application, which are consistent with the site plan. That has all been, been buttoned up. There are a total of four different units based upon the footprints that we have to work within, but those have all been, all been buttoned up, I believe, to Terry's satisfaction. He can certainly speak to that if he needs to. He has some other technical comments, which we would, which we would agree to satisfy, and that's pretty much all I'd like to say at this point.
If we can just, there's, there's one neighbor here who has a concern, I just want to.
There's another neighbor, something else.
Okay.
What's lot three going to be?
I had the same question, lot three and lot four? We're going to be lot. Lot four is a lot with stormwater management basin located on it, so it's an individual lot being created for the stormwater management basin. Lot, lot three is currently shown as a, as a vacant lot with no development proposed on it. We had, we had a lot of discussion, you know, the three of us had a lot of discussion as to how many units we should propose with this application, and how aggressive we want it to be, you know, trying to, of course, take into consideration the board's input from the previous applications, and we had decided that at this time, it was, it was our best interest and, and the best plan to come in with a, with a, with an application for twelve units and, you know, see how, see how we do with that.
Is that lot going to be dedicated to the?
A stormwater management lot?
No.
Is it going to be, is the ownership going to be retained by the owner, or is it going?
Here's the number back next month, the number one.
What's the purpose of the vacant lot?
Oh, I get it. I, I would like to see all the space.
What is?
But I just want to know.
What's the purpose of the vacant lot?
Single family. Hospital. So, is this a destination to a single family?
Going to be dedicated for open space?
No, we want it for a single family.
Would we want it dedicated for open space?
For a single family.
Of course you'd rather, but that's on the application.
It doesn't show.
We know it's a lot. That's just a whole lot, but we know yet when the vacant lot is going to be used for.
The applicant's indicating that he'd love to put a single-family house on it at a later date, but it's, it's not on, it's not on the plan. The board, the board can, doesn't, it, it would have to be approved as a single-family lot.
I appreciate that it wasn't on the plan, that's why we're going to get out now. The board could make, the board could make each of the lots larger to use up that vacant lot.
Or the, I mean, yeah, the board would have, the board at this point would have, you know, I agree, several options. The board, the board could.
You can play with, because it's only adjacent to one lot.
Or you can move the houses along the corner.
No.
Well, the board could put.
Traffic coming around.
The board could offer no restrictions and say, if you want to build something on it, you come back for a separate variance.
I think the applicant should have been a little more candid with the board. You know what was disapproved last time, and now we're only coming in for six duplexes, and, oh, by the way, now that you've asked us, this vacant lot's going to be another house.
Well, no, we didn't say that.
I wish you could have been more candid.
Well, we didn't, we didn't say that. We left it as, we left it now for, we left it now as open, because.
What do you mean, open?
There's no development on it.
I don't know, I think open space. The applicant is, is just said he wants to put a single-family house on it, right?
I think that's what his ultimate wish is, but that's not what this application is for.
Oh, no kidding?
Well, no, this, this application. This application shows.
Like I said earlier, the applicant could have been more candid with the board. It's ten minutes of eleven, we have to find this out now?
This application shows a vacant lot. This application is not asking for.
Don't argue with me, man.
It's not asking for a single-family house on that lot.
How big is that lot?
The lot is.
You're in a hole, don't keep digging.
The lot's ten thousand square feet.
The board wants to restrict it, they'll restrict it.
Correct.
The board can, the board has, the board has the right to restrict it and say it has to be de, dedicated to open space.
And that's the condition the applicant would accept.
If that's a condition, that's a condition. The applicant wasn't, Jerry, the applicant wasn't hiding anything. He just left it as an open.
Yeah, I know, I wasn't watching.
He wasn't hiding anything. He doesn't.
No, come on, don't snort.
Stop. The board has the right to say that that lot has to be dedicated as open space, if that's what the board wants to do.
Okay, let's, let's, let's move on. We'll come back to this lot after you finish testing.
That would be my first question, how do you?
The side one, what do you want to do with this?
Jerry.
Jerry, you have to keep this in mind, and let, not let it slip through during the middle of the trial.
Somebody will remember.
Jerry's going to remember for sure.
My second question is, if you go down Golders Green Road, and we're going to want it to be developed to be trading with this one, there's no statement that means like four hundred feet drop, how many feet are there? Twenty, twenty feet?
Well.
How does that work?
There's a, there is a, there is a, an existing grade change between the two properties.
Yes, pretty right.
At, at the, at the end of the existing development, there's retaining wall.
There's a big one.
There's a retain, there's a retaining wall, that's whatever it is, five, six, five, six feet high. Our, our plan, we certainly had to, whatever it is, whatever it is. Our plan, we had to match the grade of the road at, at the prop, at the property line to be able to extend the road, so our, our plan calls for that. So we'll be, we'll be, you know, bringing a filter in here as required to make, make the grade work in accordance with, you know, township and, and RSI as required.
Do you read that as possible?
So, so that's a big engineering job, making sure that the fill works and the houses built in the fill.
Correct, but the bas, the basements will not be built on fill. The basements, the houses will bear on virgin, virgin material. It's not, it's not recommended to build houses on fill, they can be subject to settlement. So all the basements will go down to natural, you know, virgin material, and then built up from there, from there.
They're going to be retaining walls in between the first couple of homes because the grade changes somewhat?
Yes, there are retaining walls required between some, some of the buildings and around, and around some of the perimeter to account for that grade change, so that we end up with nice usable rear yards. The alternative would be, if we, if we didn't want to build those retaining walls, we'd end up with that, with yards that are too steep and would not be usable, enjoyable by the future residents.
I certainly see behind the homes that there's retaining walls, and we talked about fences and stuff, but between the actual homes, is there going to be paint lines?
No, from, from, from every lot to the adjoining lot, you know, from side to side, they're basically at the same grade. There's no, there's no steep slopes from, from one building to the next and on the side yard. We've tried, we've tried to, tried to make, you know, we, we have made it so that the yard areas are usable.
And, and what type of fences are proposed, I guess, right before?
I believe the, the board had, had recommended six-foot-high vinyl fences in the previous resolution, so that's what we're proposing, in order to provide privacy and to provide, you know, safety for.
So these fences are also going to be put up against the wetland corridor over here, so then we can go over and run right into the wetland buffer?
Well, we're not, which. If you look at lot, if you look at lot eleven.
Lot eleven.
Lot eleven, point two.
Yes.
So that, that lot would not have any fence in the backyard. We're not proposing, I don't, I don't believe there's any need for a fence in that backyard. That backyard is that grade. That backyard does not have a retaining wall, so I don't believe there's any benefit of putting a fence in that backyard.
But lot, but lot twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, it's going to have a fence right on top of the retaining wall?
Correct. But those retaining walls are, are at least twenty feet from the end of the units.
Correct.
So we are maintaining, you know, usable rear yard space in accordance with, with UDO requirements.
But there is.
And that is, that is.
I see retaining wall being in lot eleven and lot ten, I see another retaining wall, so is there going to be a fence on that retaining wall?
Um, yes.
And then let's.
That, again, that's what the board, that's what the board had recommended, and that's also what the township engineer requires.
Then we have lot ten and nine, there's no retaining wall there behind the lots.
Correct.
So there's no fence there either.
Correct.
But there is a fence on the side of nine, because I do see a retaining wall.
Yes, because we have some restriction error within easement to the MUI that we can't.
So how that parking goes now?
Extend into. Well, the parking, the parking for lot nine, you can see is at the, is at the end of Golders Green Road, is kind of, kind of on the side of lot nine. You should be able to see the four spaces there on the side.
Oh, here it is, yes.
Right, so they're not directly in front of the units, because that, that lot is at the corner, you know, let's call it a, let's just call it an L-shaped lot.
What are you talking?
Let's just call that, let's just call an L-shaped lot, so those parking spaces are on the other, other portion of the lot, still in very close proximity to the house.
So the rest of the retaining wall that I see over here, we can go around seven, six, six fifteen, five, all that has retaining wall around the, the cul-de-sac, all that is going to have a fence right on top of it.
Yes, and again, that allows us to get that, to get the grade in the backyards and the side yards, you know, as flat as possible and usable.
As high and as flat as possible, even squared all the way.
Correct.
Same thing is here, existing retaining wall, this is also the same idea over here. Okay. Garbage is going to be, I guess, patch garbage?
Uh, yes, since it's a public right of way.
Since it's a public right. So this regular curve turn that you have into the Golders Green Road, into the cul-de-sac? I'm getting to that. So thirty foot. So that should work, that, 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 that curve?
Yes.
And the same thing will work in the cul-de-sac for a truck or, or a bus, just flip around and come back down.
Yes, the cul, the cul-de-sac is RSI is compliant.
Jerry, Terry, are you in agreement?
Yes.
The plan?
Yes.
A big patch of garbage truck can come in and make this turn?
Public Works is going to review this design. If they have issues with the circulation, they're going to have to make changes.
And a school bus?
School bus, if it's RSI is.
Right.
It should be fine.
Okay, but I see here thirty-foot wide, on blacktop.
I would assume the school buses wouldn't come all the way down to the end of this cul-de-sac, they would do whatever they do in the existing development. I would, I would assume, but it's up to the board.
I.
I'd be surprised if they came down to this cul-de-sac.
I'll speak later.
You can ask her.
Okay. On thirty-foot carway, I don't have much of an issue with parking, because we have one side as well, there are no houses, so you.
And we kept the thirty foot that matches the existing width of Golders Green Road. I know the board likes to see thirty-two, but that's the, the width of the existing roadway.
So this is, 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 is no access, so I have to save that a lot. Yeah, all this, the parking lot here. Yeah, that's true. Okay. Snow removal is going to be catched snow removal?
Public tree.
What?
Public tree.
Okay. Any other, any what?
You know what?
Yes, just, why aren't we here with this?
Yeah.
Then, sure, we'll have to come back next, next, next. One minute, one minute, one minute. Is this part of the public record? Then I have to go into the public, I'm not ready to.
Uh, how about?
Graham will do it.
I can explain it.
She's okay with Graham explaining it.
I can explain. We've spoken about, I now am going to refer to the grade and plan marked as, which is marked as A2, was the grade and plan that we submitted with the application. The, the adjoining backyard of Williams lot nineteen point five two.
Yes.
Which is a unit right next to the development.
Yes.
If you look at her lot, you can see that she has an existing retaining wall.
Yes.
That is about fifteen feet off of her existing building, and is, it is also about fifteen feet from the wall.
And it's about fifteen from the new retaining wall.
Correct.
Correct. After some discussion, she has some questions about, you know, about the, about the retaining wall, and had some concerns about drainage runoff, and after talking to her, we decided the best solution would be if we were to extend her retaining wall, I'm going to draw on this plan, if we were to extend her retaining wall all the way over to our property line, eliminate this portion of her existing retaining wall.
You're going to merge the retaining wall.
Then we would not have to build this portion of retaining wall. So now, so now those two lots would be at the same grade without, without a retaining wall, a hole, I'm going to call it, and then another retaining.
And that one back retaining wall?
Well, we, we would still have a retaining wall coming off of her existing building.
Right, that, that will at the back.
And then go back along our sidelines.
Correct, so you're going to merge the lot together, you're going to make it even.
Correct, so the grade of those two lots would.
Lot at a time, please?
We won't need any dry wells, is that going to work?
Correct, the grade of those two lots would essentially be even. It would benefit, I believe it would benefit both properties. It would make her lot a little more attractive and not have to have a retaining wall.
You, you're creating a one big open space.
Correct. Correct.
Jerry, is that, I meant Terry, is that going to, is that, you shouldn't have known